Regular city council meeting Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. This is a paragraph I read regarding remote meetings. In accordance with Executive Order N-2920 and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on Gatherings, remote public participation is allowed. We will address the order in the following ways. Members of the public may not physically attend meetings. The city council meeting will be livestreamed on Comcast Channel 28 and on the city's website, barring technical difficulties. Those members of the public wishing to participate must do so remotely via Zoom electronic meetings in the following ways: by either logging onto the Zoom link located on the meeting agenda. Please download the app to your computer or mobile device and enter the meeting ID, or by calling a list number and enter the meeting ID. Public comment for city council meetings will be accepted via email to publiccomment@cityofstalina.org. All public comments must be emailed by 4:00 PM prior to the meeting. Emailed public comments will not be read out loud, but will be publicly available and attached to the online city council agenda. Please see the end of the agenda for detailed public participation instructions. And Ms. Nixon, do you have any highlights or information on public participation to add?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor Ellsworth. What I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen and show the number to call in. So there's a few ways you can participate in tonight's meeting. For those folks who just want to call in on the phone, what you're going to do is you're going to dial 669-900-6833, and then at the prompt, you're going to enter 815-6796-5484. You're going to press pound. And then if you'd like to speak during public comment when the mayor calls for public comment, you'll want to press star nine, and then when it's your turn to speak, you'll unmute yourself. And what I'm going to do is before we do public comment for each item, I'm going to, if it's okay, Mayor Ellsworth, I'm going to just put this up on the screen so that folks who want to call in know how to do that. And then for those who are joining via the Zoom app from a computer or an iPad, what you can do is at the bottom, if you're on a computer, or at the top, if you're on an iPad, there's a little raise hand icon. And during public comment, you will click on the raise hand icon, and we will acknowledge it during that time. And I just ask that everyone states their full name, and I will be in charge of the clock. So thank you so much, and again, I'll flash that number for those joining on the phone before we take public comment.
Very good. Thank you. Now, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. If folks would mute their microphones and then follow with me, place your hand on your heart. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Now we'll move to our roll call, please.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Here.
Councilor Chateau.
Yes.
Councilmember Coberstein.
Here.
Councilmember Knutson.
Present.
Okay, very good. We'll now move to our public forum. I just have a few comments before we move into this. I just want to take a moment and just recognize that we've just gotten out of a very challenging emergency situation. We're moving into recovery on with the glass fire. We're still in the COVID emergency and working through that. So I want to thank the community for the continued patience and calm as we all work together to get through this. Want to thank the first responders, the city and county administrators who've really worked hard to get us through. We want to keep working together, communicating with the county, the other jurisdictions, and just keep the good dialogues that have come through, the challenges of COVID are going to help us in these recovery phases. So I just want to, you know, express gratitude to those who worked so hard, moving us forward through the emergency, the glass fire emergency, and as we continue with COVID. And just remind the community, we're still in these circumstances, so that COVID protocol, et cetera, we still need to follow. We'll have a little bit further report on these issues with our city manager as an agenda item, but I just wanted to take a moment, just remind folks where we are, and be grateful that we've all been able to work together to move forward, and then we'll be here to help those who need as we go forward. So with, oh, Cindy, I'm seeing a hand.
I'm sorry. I meant to announce earlier, we're having some technical difficulties, and so we are streaming on Channel 28 this evening. We are not livestreaming on our website, but the video will be made available as soon as possible. Just wanted to let everyone know.
Thank you. And then, so we're going to move into public comment, and I've got two quick little comments about that. First of all, I got a request from somebody who wanted to make sure that when they spoke for their four minutes, they weren't interrupted with, you know, a sort of a warning about how much time they had left, et cetera. So I'm going to be careful, make sure they have their four minutes, and we'll time it, but don't be interrupted. I guess we're getting a little feedback there. And the other thing was a request came up a while ago about looking into protocol for public comment regarding the community and how we take public comment, sort of the boundaries, how we as council have our discourse, and then what's sort of the protocol for public comment. I spoke briefly with our city attorney, Ethan Walsh, today, and we'll have a little bit more information on that soon with a little bit of insight as that goes. So I just wanted to bring that up as we get into public comment, and now we'll have public comment. And this is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda, and each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. And brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas, but in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. Thank you. So with that, we will take public comment. Ms. Nixon.
Thank you. Yes, we do have public comment. Last name Howard, I'm going to allow you to speak. You should be able to speak now. Please state your full name.
Great, thank you. My name is Bryce Howard. I'm the general manager at the Clover Flat landfill. I wanted to give you a brief update on what's taken place in the last couple of weeks since the glass fire took place. The county environmental health and staff inspected the Clover Flat landfill on September 28th, and then did it a second time with the staff of the state water board on October 5th. Permission to reopen Clover Flat was granted by all regulatory agencies. Clover Flat has been receiving loads from the Upper Valley disposal services collection operation since October 5th. Clover Flat began receiving loads from municipalities and contractors on October 8th, and has received 300-plus tons of fire debris and green waste from the City of St. Helena contractor doing some cleanup work. Clover Flat will be reopened to the public beginning on October 20th. A couple other items: no leachate leaked from the Clover Flat during this interruption of service. The leachate conveyance system was damaged, but no leachate actually leaked from the site. Those repairs will be completed by October 16th. No landfill gas wells were damaged. The landfill gas collection flare was reactivated because it went down because of the fire on October 1st, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a brief question about erosion control. If we're looking at the rainy season coming, was there impact to the erosion control? Is that being dealt with?
Great question. So yes, erosion control is a series of different types of activities. Some of those are hay bales and straw wattles. So a number of those were burnt up during the fire. We've already received material on site to replace those, and we've also added two hydroseeding type machines to our operation, which we're using both of those currently. We expect to have our site completely hydroseeded with a variety of different types of materials, whether it's some pure seed or some other additional spray-on materials that help stop erosion control, along with replacing a lot of straw wattles and hay bales. So we're confident that we'll have that done before the rains start.
Thank you. And I'm seeing a hand from Mr. Doring.
And Mr. Howard, just for the benefit of the public, can you briefly describe or define what leachate is? Thank you.
Leach, sure. Leachate is liquid that is generated from the trash disposal operation, and that is typical with all landfills generate leachate. And we have a lining system and a collection system that collects the leachate in the landfill, and then out of these sumps that are located in the landfill, we pump it into tanks and we reuse it for dust control, or take it to a wastewater treatment plant, depending on what type of leachate it is. And so none of the leachate left our site. It was all contained in the site itself.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have additional public comment. Hold on one second. Last name Malon, I'm going to unmute you, and you should be able to unmute yourself now and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Chris Mailand, 2945 Atlas Peak Road. Clover Flat landfill has unfortunately severely eroded the public trust due to their long history of regulatory and code violations regarding county use permits, state facility and water permits, municipal health and safety nuisance permits, Cal Fire and Department of Fish and Wildlife permits. Dump wastewater from landfills is called leachate, which is characterized by high organic and intergrainic pollutant concentrates and is extremely toxic to the environment. Due to its high toxicity, landfill leachate is a major threat to water. Many of Clover Flat's regulatory violations included poor management of leachate through 2019, including deliberately opening a valve on a containment of poisonous leachate that then drained into a stream, and hence the Napa River. The glass fire roared through the forested mountains of Napa, including the steep canyons and slopes of this landfill perched high in the Napa River watershed. A close neighbor to this, who has been terrorized by Clover Flat for many years due to their dangerous 13 fires and other violations since 2013 and numerous other pollution events, witnessed the glass fire raging through this landfill, and with his own eyes saw a huge explosion and mushroom cloud as the fire ignited dumped volatile gases, including methane, which caused the air to become even more dangerous for days. Seven days ago, inspections by resource agencies found that the landfill infrastructure of gas headers, leachate holding ponds, and erosion control are severely damaged by the glass fire. On May 2019, the landfill endangered their employee, who was injured and went to the hospital from a hazardous waste explosion. The landfill allowed a famous winery to dump the equivalent of six 50-gallon barrels of hazardous waste into their landfill, which exploded when their equipment drove over it. Again, in May 2019, five employees were exposed to high levels of radiation contained in three frac tanks purchased from North Dakota fracking fields, and then used by the landfill to store leachate. One employee needed high-level specialized hospital care due to radiation poisoning. The landfill owners developed an illegal road above the landfill which rode it into a stream of the Napa River. This illegal road meant no erosion control best management practices were in place. The eroded soil's composition high in sulfur reacted in contact with the stream during storm and formed sulfuric acid, and then polluted the creek. The landfill has failed to repair important groundwater monitoring wells. Since these severe regulatory violations were caught by oversight agencies in 2019 upon what started out as a routine inspection, inspection oversight fines and corrective actions have been numerous and very costly to the public to get the landfill to comply with their permits. When no one is looking, the landfill has egregiously polluted our environment and endangered the public. Important factors should be considered about the landfill location, such as the location of the landfill in steep mountains and canyons means their 100-year storm event metric for holding and storing leachate can fail as all storm events beyond and up to 100-year events are now more frequent due to climate change, and large storm events will come and more frequently and are unmanageable. Fires pose a clear and present danger in this fire-prone area, and given the landfill produces large amounts of methane gas, this is a time bomb that went off during the glass fire.
Ms. Mailand, this is the four minutes, so we appreciate the public comment. Thank you.
All right, we do have additional public comment. Hold on one second. Last name Galbraith, I'm going to allow you to speak, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, I've done that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Alan Galbraith, 1329 Allen Avenue, St. Helena. I've reviewed with care the 510-page redline draft final of LAFCO's Napa County Water and Wastewater Municipal Service Review. I submitted factual comments, especially with respect to the City of St. Helena. My expectation is that most of it will be accepted, but there was one comment by me that, to my amazement, was incorrect. LAFCO stated that the land owned by the city, about 95 acres around the southern half of Bell Canyon Reservoir, was not in the county but within city limits, meaning also that it was within the city's zoning control. This was surprising news to me. I had thought this land was in the county, not the city. I checked with my distinguished predecessor, Mayor Ann Navarro, who spent much time on the general plan update, and I think it's fair to say that this was as much a surprise to her as to me. LAFCO provided the two backup parcel reports to prove its point. They plainly show that the city has zoning control, and therefore the land is within city limits. I checked the maps in the general plan update. They do not show the 95 acres as within city limits. Figure 7.1 and 7.1A in the LAFCO redline graph show the 95 or so acres within city limits. So here is my request, that the planning department prepare Amendment Number 1 to the general plan update incorporating LAFCO Figure 7.1 maps as correctly showing actual city limits with a recommendation for council zone, the 95 or so acres as park, same way the land around Lower Reservoir is owned. My hope is the planning department can do so in the very near future. I see a staff recommendation of no more than a page for the LAFCO Figure 7.1 map as an attachment. I see no reason why this should be other than a council consent item. Importantly, we need the document, so as not, again, to be forgotten, that our city is 95 acres or so larger than presented in the general plan update. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Very much appreciated. We will, Ms. Nixon, is there any additional public comment at this time?
Yes, there is additional public comment. Last name Durbin, I'm going to unmute yourself. Here you go. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, Nancy Durbin here. The Shape Committee and City Council held a joint meeting on June 25th, 2018, to review final options. In alignment with Shape, City Council indicated a preference to rebuild a multi-use city hall structure on-site. Rationale included ease of parking nearby, proximity to the fire department, post office, and rianda house, its potential to contribute to a more active downtown, and the potential to better integrate aesthetically with Lyman Park to create a destination civic space. They did not recommend selling or putting a hotel on Adams Street. Three months later, City Council confirmed the recommendation for a mixed-use city hall built at the current location, and again, they did not recommend selling or putting a hotel on Adams Street. This information is easily verified on the city website. To date, no steps have been taken to rebuild city hall. In a letter to the editor this January, Shape Committee Chairman Mark Smithers wrote, quote, "I'm not sure how a few citizens and one council member have been able to send this off the rails and go against the will of St. Helena citizens, the Shape Committee, City Council, and good fiscal sense, but they've worked hard," end of quote. Imagine if that one council member had worked as hard on getting city hall rebuilt at its current site instead of suddenly working on an alternative agenda. Read the actual financing civic infrastructure task force report for yourself. On page four, they recommend issuing $20 million in 30-year bonds and the consideration of selling one or more small city properties. Nowhere does the report recommend selling the large parcel of public land on Adams Street or building a hotel there. From Public Records, the city paid Cosmont over $175,000 for their services, $45,000 to Vernazza Wolf, $76,000 to EMG, and after eight months of shape studies and public workshops, an additional $283,000 to Nolan Cam for architectural daydreaming. That's $579,000 paid for professional consultations in the last five years alone. You can see Public Records Request Number 079-20 dated July 1st, 2020, to confirm the numbers for yourself. Nearly $300,000 were wasted after the initial plan was sent off the rails, and still, no city hall. On a more personal note, I think looking to squeeze whatever money we can out of our assets, no matter the environmental cost, is very misguided. Cultivating recreational and open spaces for the enjoyment of all and investing in our middle class by creating housing they can afford will bring far more benefit to St. Helena than luring wealthier tourists ever will. It's a matter of ethics and moral responsibility. I hope everybody votes yes on Measure G to protect our public property on Adams Street. Thank you for letting me speak, and I'm glad you all survived the fire. It's good to see you healthy and on the screen. Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Nixon, are we seeing any additional public comment?
I am not seeing any additional public comment, any raised hands at this time. Thank you.
Very good. So I'll bring it back now, and we'll do our reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 12304 reports, and I'll call first on our city attorney if there are any reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Thank you very much. Our city manager, Mr. Presswich.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items to report on. First, our citizens have probably seen PG&E is gearing up for a public safety power shut-off, a PSPS. There is a map available on the PG&E website where you can check your own address, or a larger map of the area. The good news for St. Helena is most of the valley floor is spared, so that means most of our downtown and commercial sectors do not appear to be involved in the next PSPS event. That event is planned to begin at 6:00 PM tomorrow night on Wednesday and run at the moment through approximately 10:00 PM on Friday. There's always a bit of a lag time after the threat disappears before they're able to inspect lines and turn power back on. That's the first issue. The second issue is, the city has scheduled a special meeting on racial equity and justice. This meeting was initially planned for the 15th. It's been moved to Thursday, the 22nd of October. At 6:00 PM, it will be a Zoom meeting, and we will also include Spanish translation on our Zoom platform. The staff report and the agenda for this meeting have been posted to the city website, and that's all.
Thank you. And we'll move to our finance director, Ms. Mitz.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. Just one quick update on our end-of-the-year audit for fiscal year 1920. Because of the fires, we did have to postpone doing our quote-unquote site visits, and so that has been postponed to the first week in November.
Okay, very good. And then our city clerk, Mr. Papoulis.
Nothing to report.
And our public works, Ms. Smithies.
Nothing to report. Staff briefing will have to...
Okay, very good. And our planning and building. Mr. Rosa.
Good evening. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a representative from our police or fire here this evening?
Yes, Mayors, Chief Hartley. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the assistance from both city council and the community during the glass fire. I communicated with all of you, and now we have moved into the cleanup phase. And again, if there's any questions, please feel free to give me a call. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to offer a very deep thank you and gratitude to our police and fire, our first responders, our emergency teams, who just did an incredible job navigating through what was a really challenging situation. I also want to recognize the administrative staffs, both our city and the county, who are a big part of this too. You know, they're more behind the scenes, but it provides the structure for us as a city to manage these types of situations. So thank you, Chief, and if you'll pass on, please, to the whole team, how grateful we are. I can't say it strongly enough, so thank you. With that, then, we will move to our council members, and we'll begin with Council Member Knutson.
I have no update, but also glad everyone's safe. That was crazy.
Ms. Chateau.
Thank you. I will update. I attended the California League of Cities Conference, and I voted, as you all guided me to vote, on the one resolution that came before us. As always, it was very interesting, and it was great this time since it was done. Remotely, you can access any of the workshops for the next six months, so you're always able to learn a lot from that. I also just wanted to bring up, I know all of our hearts are heavy with the loss of homes and property, and even the natural landscape that so many in our community have lost. It was particularly heartbreaking to hear of all the families through the elementary school that have lost homes. It really brought it home. I know all of us are just seeing...
Ms. Chateau, I'm having trouble hearing you. I don't know if anybody else is.
Yes, her audio is not working correctly.
Okay, I think she's making a request, so I want to make sure we...
Knowing that affordable housing, just housing in general, at any level, was so tricky for how it's going to be.
Ms. Chateau, can we have you try to call in again and reconnect?
So why don't I move to Ms. Coberstein, and we'll connect with Ms. Chateau to have her call in.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of things. In January, there will be a notice of funds availability for Community Development Block Grant, and it requires a public hearing for us to move ahead. I would like to suggest that we consider applying for money for a planning and technical assistance grant, up to $100,000, to give us the opportunity to study properties in the city that are existing or potential housing sites. And I suggest that we would agendize a public hearing on this matter in December, so we're ready to apply when the time comes. I don't know if anybody else would agree.
I would second that. Support that. I agree with that.
Second, you know, I too have something to say about the glass fire. After the 2017 fires, I'm sure everybody remembers, we launched the first annual thanks and gratitude community potluck. And Mark asked me recently if I had any idea this year in the wake of the glass fire. I came up with a couple of ideas. We talked about them last night, and I want to share them with the whole council and the community, and see where you would like to go from here. First, as other people have mentioned, we of course thank our first responders, but this year, it's also really important to recognize our entire city staff. Our employees put in countless, unending hours of long shifts, work... Our employees put in countless unending hours of long shifts, work overtime, public works, city administration, the public administration officer, all the way through the ranks. So I would suggest that this year the council issue a proclamation thanking the entire city staff for their work during the glass fire. This proclamation might designate one week, maybe the last week in October, the first week in November, as St. Helena City Employees Week. In the wake of this fire, I think one lasting way to memorialize our thoughts and feelings as a community would be to commission some kind of large plaque that would be on public display. And rather than place it on a building, I'd suggest we install it downtown, perhaps in our new sidewalks after they're poured, maybe at Hunt and Main, something to commemorate our experience and our resiliency that would be available for generations to come to see, visitors and residents alike. We might consider a banner across Main Street during Public Employees Work Week. And since Thanks and Gratitude has always been about food, maybe as council members, we can treat all our employees to lunch during City Employees Week. And we could encourage residents and businesses to support our local nonprofits, food banks, and more. I talked briefly with John Sorensen, and he had an idea about a drive-through lobster feed. We are still in fire season, and this would be something that could maybe happen early or middle of November. I would leave it up to him, but I think it's kind of a fun idea, and it would be an additional way to raise money. And maybe small groups of people could socially distance and enjoy their lobster. He also suggested perhaps a parade when the time comes. And there is some feeling in the community that we'd like some kind of gratitude wall where people could write or express their own particular sentiments about the experience we've all been through. So that's it. I'm kind of throwing it out there for people to accept or offer to start working on. You know, I think this has been such more of a personal situation than previous fires and affected really everybody, and I think some of these things are an appropriate way to move forward.
Is your thought to perhaps put a menu of those ideas together, and then they could be sort of perused by the council or folks to see how we might want to prioritize? I think it's wonderful, the ideas of...
Send the list in to Cindy or Priya or Mark, and then it could be distributed to people and see who's interested in working on which parts of it. There'd be a proclamation to write and other things. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, very good.
I have just a couple of UVDS announcements. If you haven't gotten it already, there's a flyer in your bills, but there's a couple of events coming up that people should be aware of. You can deposit your used medications and sharps on Saturday, October 24th, at the St. Helena Police Station. You have to transport them in rigid containers, no larger than a gallon. On Sunday, November 14th, at the Napa County Fairgrounds, there's a hazardous waste event. Appointments are required, so if you plan on taking advantage of this opportunity, you need to go online to countyofnapa.orgbackslashhaswaste, or you can telephone 707-259-8330. The recent UVDS flyer also includes an announcement from Napa Climate Now. For those of you who don't know it, as you're cooking dinner every night or making your breakfast, you can take your uncooked food scraps and you can throw them in your green collection bin. You can even take fallen figs or whatever fruit you have from your trees and add it to the green bin along with your yard trimmings. And this ultimately helps reduce the production of nothing. Lastly, Mayor Jeff, you asked for clarification of the dates that certain tanks were removed from CFL. This information was reported at a June JPA Zoom meeting. I know you attended because you led the Pledge of Allegiance, but maybe you signed off before the information was reported. But in 2019, CFL did purchase three used tanks for water storage from a tank broker in the Midwest. When they arrived at CFL, the staff was not aware that there was radioactive sludge matter at the bottom of them. They were filled partially or completely with leachate, and then the contamination was detected. So as to your question, one tank had only trace elements. The contents was disposed of locally. It was hauled to Santa Rosa by Clean Solutions on March 2nd and 3rd for proper disposal. The contents of the two other tanks was hauled to Yuma, Arizona on March 27th, April 3rd, and April 9th. And the tanks that contained that material were certified clean last April. And the Napa hazmat team was informed throughout the process. Lastly, there have been some comments made that perhaps the JPA ought to be entering into some bid arrangement for waste hauling rather than contracting with UVDS. And I just want to clarify that the UVDS contract is not up for renewal. It is being worked on to be further amended and improved. It has at least 15 more years to come to go. And so the JPA is not in any position at this point to toss that agreement out and get into some bidding arrangement for waste hauling. If we did that, we'd actually be in breach of the agreement. So the JPA itself, for those who don't know what it is, it's a cooperating governmental agency. It consists of five members, elected officials from the County of Napa, Calistoga, Youngville, and St. Helena. We're a cooperating actor. And so for people who have concerns about what's happening, either in front of the JPA or at Clover Flat or UVDS, the proper venue to address those is at the JPA meetings. And the next one is Monday, October 9th at 2:00 PM. It'll be conducted via Zoom. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And the dates that you put out, the March and April dates of the removal, that's year 2020. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm seeing Mr. Tudor, and your mute is on, Mr. Tudor.
Mayor, I think Councilmember Coburnstein may have wanted to say Monday, October 19th, not Monday, October 9th, just pointing that out.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Vice Mayor Doring.
Let me defer to Councilmember Chateau, who I don't believe finished her comment.
Thank you.
Why, thank you, Vice Mayor Doring. I'm frozen. Sorry about that. I got back on my Wi-Fi, so I don't know how much I said. I'm just going to keep it really short. I want to see if there's council support to look at, as we move into recovery, what we can do in our city and even in the surrounding areas to help with housing if there is a need with people to help them find and connect with housing, since so much was lost recently.
I'm absolutely in support of that. I think it's going to be a huge issue, and it's something that as a city can be supportive and helpful to those in the surrounding areas. So very much in favor of looking at anything that we can do to be helpful on that front.
Thank you.
Mr. Doring, Vice Mayor Doring.
I think I better be brief. I attended the League of California Cities seminar. I actually saw one meeting on IFD by Larry Cosmont. I was intending to watch more of those videos, but I've been told that they, as the council members said, they're online for another six months. I had the great pleasure of participating in the coastal cleanup a couple of weeks ago. Thank you to Pam and Mark Smithers for inviting me on a jaunt in the river from the bridge at Valley View all the way to just beyond the Main Street Bridge. It was a beautiful day. It was great to interact with them. And yes, we picked up a lot of garbage. Interesting note, this is a post-COVID-19 story. What was the most garbage that we saw? Masks. At least from my perspective, there are a lot of masks in the river, which is a sad statement, but thank you to the Smithers for allowing me to do that. I just completed a 14-hour online course offered through UC Davis on groundwater management and watersheds, a very introductory course, but much of the information was new to me in terms of wells, groundwater, watershed management, a good overview. I commend that to anyone else. The UC Davis is really on top of those issues in terms of educating the public and professionals. I only have brief information on this because it's not fully vetted, but my understanding is there is a methodology recommendation out now from A-BAG Rena Methodology Committee. And my understanding, and it hasn't been approved finally, but the city of St. Helena is going to be required in my, well, if this is approved, to produce 180 to 190 units of affordable housing. Again, that's not finally set in stone, but that is what the initial recommendations are from that committee. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tudor, I'm seeing your hand.
I have to join Congressman Thompson for a workshop, a public town hall meeting at 7:00. I was, I thought I was going to be on at 6:00 with you, so I'm available for about another 10 minutes.
Mr. Tudor, I apologize. I probably should have slotted you in first, and I appreciate your being here with us. So I'm going to, with the council, okay, open the floor to you for your presentation now, and then I'll circle back with, I just have one brief comment. Please, please, if you would take us, this is item 6.1, and this is safely voting in the November 3, 2020 general municipal election by Mr. Tudor, our registrar of voters.
Well, thank you. I wanted to just point out that the two big messages of this election are vote safe, which please means use the vote-by-mail ballot we've sent to everyone. If you have not yet received your vote-by-mail ballot, you should check with the county website for your voter information. We mailed all the ballots October 6th to everyone who was registered. So if you did not receive your ballot by now, we already have 5,500 ballots back, which is 20 times the return that we had in the November 2016 presidential election. So there's a lot of activity out there. So if anyone listening has not received their ballot, they should contact the Election Division at 707-253-4321 or elections@countyofnapa.org. So vote safe is first. Vote early is next. We're urging people, if for any reason they need to do in-person voting, such as registering to vote after October 20th, that they do so either Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, October 31st, November 1st, or November 2nd, to avoid any congestion on Election Day at our eight vote centers plus our office, including the vote center at Upper Valley College in St. Helena. People still have until October 19th to register to vote online or by paper, and they will still get a ballot from us prior to October 30th, so they'll have time to vote and get their ballot back and postmark by November 3rd. We have 17 days after the election for that ballot to arrive at us and then be counted still. Those are the main points I wanted to make for fire survivors. We're urging them, you cannot forward a vote-by-mail ballot for any circumstances. So if someone has given the post office a temporary address, they need to give it to us also, and we will send them a new ballot. The post office cannot forward our ballot to them. Again, 707-253-4321 or elections@countyofnapa.org with your temporary address, and we will send you a new ballot in plenty of time for you to, and all the materials that come with it, in plenty of time for you to mark your ballot and return it to us. One last thing, and that is people have been asking a lot about their signatures. They're concerned because of the atmosphere around this election that somehow if their signature doesn't match something, it may not be counted. It is not compared to the signature on your driver's license. It's compared to the signature on your voter registration. So the most important thing they can do is, one, just sign with their regular signature. Don't worry about it. And if they are concerned, they can have a family member, an acquaintance, a friend, or a neighbor witness their signature. As they sign it, anyone can witness their signature. There's a space on the envelope, and that will give us better evidence that they have signed the envelope and not have to worry about the quality of their signature. Many people forget to sign their return envelope, unfortunately, and/or if their signature is challenged for some reason, we will contact them, and they'll have up to 22 days after the election to fix the problem. So it's not a fatal problem if they fail to sign their return envelope or if for any reason their signature is challenged. I just wanted to reassure people that my most important job is to make sure that every vote is counted accurately, and that will take place in this election as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are. I'm having a little technical issue. When I unmute, I lose the voice, so I have to turn my audio on and off, so I will do that if I have any questions.
I'm seeing Ms. Chateau with a hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor, for being here. It's great information. My question came from a resident that was asking me, how do we know that our ballot box is secure? That people aren't messing with it at night or trying to get in there and get ballots?
Well, the only vandalism we've had at our ballot boxes since June of 2018 happened to occur in St. Helena, and it was some kids put some eucalyptus leaves through the slot, which is so tight, there's not much else you can do about it. We've had no problems with our official ballot drop boxes. Somebody did steal one of the bases for the flags this year, which has never happened before, but we've replaced the flag. They're very secure. They've, and I can assure people that we are getting a ton of ballots back in our drop boxes, 20 times ahead of last presidential election. So people are using them and feeling secure. Now, we also will have drive-through voting on Monday, November 2nd, and Tuesday, November 3rd, at the St. Helena Vote Center. It's separate from the Vote Center, but if people want to follow all pandemic precautions, they're welcome to come from 8:00 to 5:00 on Monday in their car. We have people there to, actually, they can hand their ballot to them without having to get out of the car, without having to go into a Vote Center. And that's also open from 7:00 AM on Tuesday, November 3rd, Election Day, until 8:00 PM. And we have plenty of staff there to handle as many vehicles, and there's plenty of room in the Upper Valley College parking lot to handle the traffic. So for people who really would like to hand their ballot to someone, that's the best way to do it and the most pandemic caring that they can do.
One quick follow-up question. How often do you pick up and collect the ballots?
I'm sorry, we were collecting them every 72 hours. We've just upped that to every 48 hours because they're filling up. And so we've just never seen this kind of a response. So the ballot drop boxes have plenty of capacity, but we're making sure they never get anywhere near capacity, so we're stepping that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring with a hand.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor, for being here. Very, very useful information, especially on the signature issue, which has happened in my immediate family. So I use the Ballot Trax system through the Secretary of State, signed up for that. It told me when my ballot was going to arrive, and it also sent me an email saying my ballot has been received and will be counted, which was kind of reassuring. which was kind of reassuring for me, especially given the numbers of ballots coming through. Your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm signed up for Ballot Trax also, Councilmember Doring, and I got both of those messages. It takes us about two days to process a ballot once it comes into our hands via the Dropbox or via the U.S. Mail. We got almost 3,000 ballots today, by the way. So it takes a couple of days after you've mailed it or dropped it in the Dropbox, but then you should receive, as soon as we note that it's good, then it goes into the computer system, automatically goes to the Secretary of State and comes in an email, and if you ask for it, a text to you. Now, it'll also tell you if there's a problem with your ballot, even though we're going to tell you that directly. Ballot Trax will also tell you that.
Thank you. You better go on to your meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tudor, for being here. It's very, very much appreciated.
Anytime.
Okay. So we'll, quickly, I have just one comment I want to make regarding the League of Cities. I was able to attend one session last week. Things were busy with the fire and recovery. But I do want to acknowledge what I think is a very important connection to the League. I want to thank Mr. Presswich for really helping our council members and our folks here understand what a valuable tool it is. It ties us in with cities all around the state, and we can learn best practice, sort of objective approaches to what we do. It's also the relationships that we start forming with other council members, electeds, and also staff and appointed officials as well, that in times such as emergencies, we can reach out looking for advice, resources, et cetera. It's a really wonderful tool. I'm glad to see that a number of our council members participated. I know our city manager did as well briefly. I know that he was focused on what we had here, as I was too, but we touched base there. And I think it's just important to recognize what a valuable tool this is for anybody who gets elected in St. Helena or is interested in participating in city government. The League of California Cities is a really valuable tool for us. So I just want to acknowledge that. And then now we'll move on, back to our, we'll move out of our reports to our staff briefings. And we're going to start with 7.1, and this is the monthly water update by Ms. Smithies.
Thank you, Mayor Eldrick, and council members. I want to update that this past month of September, we did just trigger the Phase 2. I was hoping to have this report and the Phase 2 item on this council meeting, but with the fires preoccupying my time and many of others, that report did not get done. So we'll be coming to council on the 27th. The, we dropped down to 40% this past month, and I've heard that we used a lot of the, the Cal Fire used a lot of the water in Bell Canyon, or use a lot of water to fight the fires this month and then probably the previous month for the LNU. I haven't confirmed that, but I am aware that they use Bell Canyon for the glass fire and the fight in England. And, well, everyone's been very good about not using too much. We just dropped down below the trigger point, and we're not looking at a Phase 3, but definitely a Phase 2, and just hoping we get an average rainfall, even if it's a little light, what they're projecting, that we can fill up this year, this coming year and this winter, and hopefully upgrade from the Phase 2 as soon as possible.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council on this report? I'm seeing Mr. Knudsen with a hand.
Yeah, there's been some questions from constituents about the safety of the water. Ms. Smithies, if you wouldn't mind addressing it, there's the issue of ash, there's the issue of the backflow. I guess it's only relevant regarding the Meadowwood part of the system. But could you talk a little bit about the testing and the way that our water system will be protected for the health of our residents? Thanks.
I was going to wait till the next briefing by the city manager on that, but we are waiting for baseline test results of the entire citywide system, as well as test results of the sampling taking place at the Meadowwood and Meadowwood Home Owners Association, the residents. We are required by the state regulations, drinking, Department of Drinking Water, to do a three-year sampling. And it just happened to be that 2020 November is our sampling period. So we went ahead and took those samples last week. Unfortunately, the sampling lab gave us the wrong vial kit or test kit, so we had to start over on Thursday. We were anticipating those test results by Saturday for, you know, the testing the volatile organic compounds, including benzene. But we still have yet to receive those results, and it's been more than 48 to 72 hours. The bottom line is, we never lost pressure in the citywide system, other than Meadowwood. We are having additional, I don't know if I should jump to it, Mr. Presswich, but we are working with regulators and our regional and local agencies on assessing the watershed of Bell Canyon because we are concerned about solids and other items that are in our watershed of Bell Canyon. That's scheduled for Thursday morning. And assessing any additional testing that may be needed, or not testing, but pre-treatment before it comes to the Lewis-Straw Water Treatment Plant. And we're working on that, so the bottom line is the water is safe to drink in the city. The only area that has put out a do-not-boil notice, do-not-drink-water notice is the Meadowwood Association and Resort. Thank you.
And Ms. Smithies, if I could, if there's an indication of when that will change at the Meadowwood area?
Water went back online yesterday to everyone but one homeowner in that area. We were able to restore water temporarily to the association and the resort. And preliminary test results that we take at a local level have come back bacterial safe, but we rely on the actual official test lab. We just do that for our own monitoring. So residents out there do have water on. We're providing, we're providing drinking water. We've had delivery at two pallets last week, or bringing another two pallets this week. We are in direct communication with the state Drinking Water Board, Division of Drinking Water, our local rep, and our regional district engineer on this. There'll be several rounds of testing requirements. The first sampling has been taken, but we're still waiting on those results. We're hopeful that we'll be able to upgrade that notice soon, but we won't know until that initial result comes in. It all kind of hangs on that first initial official test result on our next sampling round.
Okay, but it sounds like the communication's good and everybody's dialed in with each other, so that sounds, that sounds good. Okay, any other questions on this before we move on? Seeing none. I will move now to our 7.2. This is our city manager update on the fire emergency and COVID-19 emergency.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to begin with a COVID emergency. So we continue to see positive progress for Napa County. The numbers are improving weekly. Every Tuesday, the state provides new information on their state website. It's covid19.ca.gov. And there, as you recall, this blueprint includes four tiers. The city is currently in the substantial tier. It's not, the worst tier is the widespread tier. But we're heading toward the moderate tier, and in fact, the data that was announced today indicates that we are meeting, and there are two factors that are considered as part of this analysis, moving from tier to tier. One of those factors is the case rate, the seven-day average for 100,000 cases, as well as the positivity rate of those tested, a seven-day average per 100,000. So the city is, the county is in the moderate category, which is good news. We need to be in that category for at least three weeks before the county can move from the substantial tier into the moderate tier. The distinction for our business community in particular is that occupancy can increase from 25% for our restaurants to 50%. So that's an important change when that occurs. And the data for our positivity rate is actually meeting targets under the minimal, the minimal tier. So that's the best tier that the state has in this four-tier blueprint. So that's very good news. In contrast with the state, Napa County's case rate is 3%, 3.0. The statewide average is 6.8, so we're better than half of that number. And on the positivity rate, the county's number is 1.6%. When we adjust for health equity through a health equity metric, that increases the number to 2.1%. The statewide average is 3.4%. So again, positive news on the COVID front, and we're looking forward to the transition in Napa County in the coming weeks from substantial to moderate. Happy to answer any questions on that issue before we move into a glass fire update.
Any questions or thoughts from the council on that? Okay, and very briefly, I'm gonna just check in on something, a little bit lighter note on this, but I think important. Questions are coming up about Halloween, and we're getting a little bit of guidance from the county and talking to the other cities about how this is going to be managed. Very briefly, I'll say that I think the young people in our community going through this as adults, we might have some context, but the young folks here, what they've had to go through is just remarkable, and they've gone through it in such a strong way. And so we want to commend them. We know with Halloween coming up, questions are coming up. It's looking as if a traditional type of trick-or-treating is going to be discouraged, but there are going to be some creative ways to look at how to celebrate Halloween. The city and our Parks and Rec Department are going to be working on that and getting messaging out. So I think we'll still be able to celebrate the spirit of the holiday, if not with some of the traditional trick-or-treating. But I just think it's an important thing to recognize our young people for just how they've held up through this and kept going. So with that, I'll pass it back to Mark, but we'll have more information on Halloween forthcoming here very shortly.
Yes. Okay, in terms of the glass fire, this is the fire that began on Sunday, September 27th, woke us up all very early in the morning. Good news is the fire is 96% contained. That's over 67,000 acres that burned. Between the 27th of September and October 8th, the city issued 45 press releases and built a website where you can find all of that information along with other resources. We've discontinued daily updates, and our future messaging will be focused on disaster recovery type of messaging. The damage inside the city limits included the loss of three residences, three city water tanks, and one small outbuilding at our water treatment plant, and a couple of other outbuildings on other properties. There was a message contained in the final update, the final press release on October 8th, indicating some of my thoughts, and I wanted to share some excerpts of that with you tonight. It includes my interest in thanking our first responders, as well as our city staff, for their tremendous work and persistence through this emergency. They were working 24/7 in police, fire, and public works. And behind the scenes, we already had an existing emergency operations center activated because of the COVID emergency, and then through the LNU complex, so we were prepared moving into this. So every department was involved in these response activities, and many long hours were invested in firefighting, protecting our neighborhoods, and mitigating the loss of city infrastructure. Consistent with our prior disasters, we're going to pursue an after-incident action report where we will convene a meeting for our community to receive feedback on what they experienced, seek recommendations, recommendations from our community. Our interest is in identifying those and implementing solutions that mitigate future disasters and also enhance our emergency preparedness. We did this in 2017 with a live meeting at the Fire Department. This year, it's going to have to be a Zoom meeting, and we anticipate scheduling that between now and Thanksgiving. So when we have a date locked in, we will announce that and encourage our community to participate in that and also to provide us some written feedback if you're unable to attend that night. As we move beyond these fires and emerge from the continuing COVID pandemic, our St. Helena business community really needs our help. They need our collective support. And I'm encouraging everyone to generously patronize our businesses. We're hopeful that we can all help write the next chapter of our community's resilience. And so our staff and I are available to answer any additional questions you have on the fire.
Are there any questions from council at this point?
Yeah. How is the situation with respect to our facilities and smoke taint and smoke damage? Particularly concerned about the health and welfare of our employees. I know that my house is still smoky. You know, it's slowly dissipating, but it's not a good thing. And I'm just wondering if, you know, have we resolved that, or are we continuing to work on that issue?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Doring. Yes, we are concerned about the conditions inside our buildings. Every building that the city staff uses, as well as the public. And so yesterday, our police and fire offices were tested for air quality. That included air sample as well as swabs. And today, the remainder of all of our city-owned facilities, from Carnegie to the library, to interim city hall, to scout hall, every building that the city owns that people are inside, we have tested that. It's going to take a few days for those test results to come back, and we're asking our staff to, any of the staff that are not involved in essential activities, such as police and fire, to limit their presence inside the buildings, to pick up materials, have, if there's a meeting or information or a document to exchange, to try to do that quickly, perhaps outdoors. Once we receive feedback from the testing, there may be some cleaning activities that we engage in and get the buildings into a position where they're healthy for our employees and our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional council questions?
Can I just go back to the COVID report for just a second, Mayor?
Yep, certainly.
You know, this is an issue that's a little bit heavy on my heart right now. You had mentioned, you know, how our youth are really responding well to the situation. But I also want to recognize that if young people need help, they should reach out for it through Up Valley Family Centers or Mentis, or the schools, or their parents, or their friends. I have, and I'm not attempting to criticize you, but I want to make sure that the message of stay strong or being strong and that kind of thing in the community does not get confused with our youth. You know, depression's gone up, anxiety has gone up, suicide has gone up in our county and elsewhere. And so I want folks to know that, you know, if you need some help from somebody, please reach out. Don't feel like you have to sort of buck up, right? If you need help, ask for the help, and we should all be there for our youth. So I just, I want to make sure that that message does not get mixed when we're talking to folks out in the community. Thank you for that time.
That's a great point, Mr. Doring, and I think that in being strong, and also we recognize when we need to reach out and when we need to help others reach out. I think it's very important that you mention that. We are strong, we can get through it, but we also all help each other and need to be able to recognize it within ourselves and others. So I'm glad, thank you for bringing that up. So with that, some of the numbers that I put out earlier, we know through Up Valley Family Centers, we know through the Napa Valley Community Foundation, readynapacounty.org, these places are places where people can reach out if they or somebody that they know needs help. We want to have everybody come through this together. So help is available. I also know that animal services are important to folks with pets, livestock, et cetera, also wildlife that is displaced during these emergencies. So NAPA CART, which is the Community Animal Response Team, and they're at 707-732-1555. That's another resource for people. And again, Napa Valley Community Foundation, Up Valley Family Centers, Mentis. We'll all be strong together and help each other through. So I want to recognize that housing, as Ms. Chateau said, this is going to be a huge issue. We in St. Helena were fortunate within our perimeters, and we will need to be strong for the outline community in support in terms of looking for solutions with housing as we work with the county and the other jurisdictions. I also want to mention that the temporary I also want to mention that the temporary infrastructure work with PG&E and the telecom services, this is something we can offer too as a city, being a platform for help going out into the county areas. The folks at AT&amp;T let me know that what they have temporarily up is not 5G, it's not 5G. That's been a comment that's come up. AT&amp;T and the other telecom providers have stepped up to make sure their services get restored as quickly as possible and I know PG&E is doing tremendous work and we have to be patient as a community because we're in the middle of it still. This is the recovery phase, so life is not as normal, but because of our community bonds, we'll get through it. So those are my comments and I do also want to again thank Mr. Dorian. I think the points he made were very important. Any other thoughts on this? Okay, with that, then we're going to move to our consent calendar and I know that we're going to, I'm going to read through the numbers. If anybody wants one of these pulled, they can raise a hand or let Priya know. And I know we're going to pull 8.4. And so I'm going to read through these and if anybody would like another one pulled, please let me know. I'm going to start with 8.1. Going to move to 8.2. And we're going to pull 8.4. So is there a motion to pass the consent calendar with the exception of 8.4?
I'll move.
One second.
And a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dorian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cobersine?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to look at item 8.4 and this is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution ratifying an emergency public project without public bidding relating to the glass fire and ratifying the following professional services agreement, construction contracts. Cindy, am I to read this entire? Yes, okay. Professional services agreement PSA with Hydro Science Engineers STH Contract FY21-024 and STH Contract FY2021-024-01A in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for glass fire preliminary damage and water quality assessments for Meadowwood Tanks and Bell Canyon. B PSA with EKI Environmental Incorporated STH Contract FY2021-025 and STH Contract FY2021-025-01A in an amount not to exceed $92,000 for design permanent water infrastructure for the Meadowwood Tanks. C Construction Contract with McCullough Construction Incorporated STH Contract FY2021-026 in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for emergency fire clearing and debris removal at Tank 1A, Tank 2, Bell Canyon Access Roads and LSWTP. D Rental Agreement with Rain for Rent STH Contract FY2021-027 in an amount not to exceed $29,987.34 for procurement of three temporary water tanks for the Meadowwood area. E Construction Contract with Taylor Bailey Incorporated STH Contract FY2021-028 and STH Contract FY2021-028-01A in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for emergency fire clearing and debris removal at Meadowwood Tanks. And F PSA with Britton Tree Services Incorporated STH Contract FY2021-029 and STH Contract FY2021-029-01A for not to exceed amount of $75,000 for emergency tree removal for road access and debris clearance system wide. And this is Ms. Smithy's, or this is, I'm sorry, prepared by April Mitz, our finance director.
So as you had stated, it is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution ratifying the emergency contract. At this point, I would be interested and find out what specific questions were going to be asked regarding this item being pulled.
Ms. Nick, are we seeing any public comment?
Let me, yes, we do have public comment. This, I'm going to allow the person to speak with the phone number, the last three digits of 662. So give me one second, I'm going to allow you to speak. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak. You may need to press star six.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by saying I'm a little hesitant to bring this information up to your attention tonight and like everyone else has stated before me, the fires that we just came through were some of the most devastating things I've ever experienced in my life. So, and I also realize our city needs to step up and repair the Meadowwood and Madrono Water Tanks and let it be perfectly clear, please, that I have no objection to St. Helena's City Council approving this agenda item this evening. But tonight, our City Council is being asked to further approve money from, I assume, our city's water enterprise to temporarily rent tanks and make repairs to Meadowwood's water system. We have read our city's intent, we have read our city intends to work on getting this money reimbursed through the Emergency Services and Grass Program. However, I'd like to take this opportunity to recommend our City Council consider, if it turns out any of the water enterprise money is not reimbursed by the state, that Meadowwood and Madrono customers should be accountable to reimburse the city's water enterprise for the difference. In 2016, our past mayor and vice mayor led St. Helena's water customers to believe we have one recirculating water system which precludes our city from employing tiered rates and pumping charges to customers where higher costs exist to provide water service. The fact is, we have several one-way spurs off our main water system that require extra costs to operate, but only a few customers benefit from. In the case of Meadowwood, we've been told our city took ownership of that system back in 1990 and because of that, the city's water enterprise is entirely responsible to pay for all Meadowwood's water system improvements. I'd like to say that I question whether the city's ownership of Meadowwood Water System takes precedent over Proposition 218's amendments to California's Constitution. In the opinion of a California attorney specializing in water law, our 2016 City Council approved a utility rate structure that was out of compliance with California's Constitution. The text in Proposition 218 makes it illegal for utility customers in a municipal district to subsidize the cost for improvement to other customers who are the sole recipient of those improvements. The fact is, our city management has not taken any steps toward reversing the mistakes made by our 2016's water rates, except for what was done in 2017. Two years ago, our city manager contracted with Black &amp; Beach for their input on our utility rates and we have not heard anything since. When recently asked, Mr. Presswich stated that he was waiting for the Corolla Master Water Plan to be complete before he released the Black &amp; Beach report, but we still haven't heard anything. I would like to request the City Council to approve an agenda item over the next 30 days or so requiring the city to contract with a California legal expert specializing in water law to review our city's utility rate structure and provide expertise on whether or not St. Helena is in compliance with California's Constitution. And I know I'm not alone in wanting this question finally answered before the next utility rate study and I thank you very much for listening.
Could you please state your full name for the record?
My name is Tom, my name is Tom Belt, B-E-L-T.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment on this item?
I am not seeing any additional public comment for this item. Thank you for your patience while I checked.
Okay, very good, thank you. A few comments, I wanted to see if there was any other council comment on this item. And seeing none, oh, seeing Mr. Knudsen.
Yeah, hey, I appreciate Mr. Belt's comments and I think we should approve this because it's an emergency, but I think it's worthwhile for us to understand the sort of an all permutations, the way that our water system has been put together. And of course, we have to be clear about the way that we may have subsystems and the main system, et cetera, and what our obligations are under state mandate. And I think now's not the time because I think we have to get water to Madrona and to Meadowwood. And I do believe those tanks should be rebuilt as well, but I do think he raises an interesting point about whether we're in compliance and we certainly should be moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional council comment? I have a few thoughts and certainly am in favor of moving this forward. This is a critical emergency situation and we want to move as quickly as possible to restore these services. I think the comments by Mr. Belt, I think, are important to consider as we look towards our next rate study and bringing the information about how our system works and looking at potential for tiered rates, et cetera, and how we work with our out-of-city limits customers. I think that's a very valid discussion. I think we were waiting for, we had and received the, we received the Corolla report a number of months ago and we are also still in these emergency situations, so things moving in a certain pace. We're working towards it. We know the Black &amp; Beach information is something we're working towards. I would support an agenda item discussing our water future here as soon as we can get to it out of these emergency situations and really look at how our systems tie in and how we're going to approach things as we get towards our next rate setting. So I would support that conversation and, but certainly today, support moving forward with this item. So that's where I am on that. Oh, Ms. Chateau?
I wondered if our city attorney could make any comment tonight or had anything to say about that question about the Proposition 218 and the California Constitution or any thoughts at all on this?
Sure, I guess the primary thing that I would say is along the lines of what the mayor and council member Knudsen said is that's a much bigger issue than what we're facing today. It's good to have a conversation and educate the public and the council on those issues and do a thorough analysis to confirm compliance with Proposition 218. That's very important. And if the council, you know, deems that appropriate to have in the coming weeks or months, then that's great. You know, I'm sure staff can work on that, but the immediate issue is really that we are acting in response to an emergency and trying to ensure the safety of the residents in that area and that they had access to water. The staff has already entered into these contracts under the emergency declaration and this is just a ratification of those contracts to confirm that we acted appropriately in the course of the emergency.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments at this point? So with that, I, oh, I'm seeing Vice Mayor Dorian.
Yes, for future reference, I noticed in some of the contracts, they appear to be fixed price contracts and did not actually have language under the compensation paragraph not to exceed, sort of a time and materials kind of language. I think for the future, we need to be careful of, we're intending a time and materials not to exceed and we should explicitly state that in the contract. Some of the contracts actually have that language, some of them do not. And so going forward, you know, according to all the staff report, these are all intended to be not to exceed time and materials contracts. So just for future reference, let's make sure that we tighten that language up in all of our contracts, if that is what we intend. I hope that we haven't exceeded any of the quote prices that have been stated, so that would be very disappointing if we have, but could somebody maybe speak to that issue? Are all the contracts, the numbers coming in under the numbers stated in the contracts?
Erica, can I divert to you on this question since you've been working with the contractors?
No problem. We're anticipating that they, the contractors know we can't exceed. I thought I was on the terms of the front, first or second page of the contract, that's the not to exceed amount and then the compensation is just how they're being paid. But as far as the not to exceed, you know, it's only been, I think they started the middle of last week. I hate to say that they're going to go up to the max, just because we got, we got, we had 100,000 for last month and I don't think it's been reported, but the work we did in advance, the LNU complex fires is probably what saved our water treatment plant. And if we're on that same rate, we're probably going to be, depending on how much clearing, I mean, the access to Bell Canyon alone, there's a lot of trees that have to be removed that had fallen or threatened of falling on our access roads to the reservoir and the spillway, the same thing at Meadowwood with our above-ground water main and our tanks. But I would be surprised if they came near it, they may come close to it, but if they went over it, I'd be disappointed for one, they're supposed to conform us that they're getting close to their contract. We're getting daily reports from at least McCullough, who's also been, who also did the emergency clearing that we had at the end of August. So we're on, what, almost working on week two now of the clearing debris and I would say that we're going to be okay.
Thank you. Mr. Dorian, does that satisfy your question?
Getting there.
Okay, do you have some additional?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, so with that, if I'm not seeing any other council comment or question, I will entertain a motion on this issue.
I move that we approve 8.4 and the resolution as stated on the consent item calendar.
One second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Chateau?
Yes.
Cobersine?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorian?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Thank you and thanks for all the work on these emergency issues. It's remarkable what our staff is accomplishing, it's really appreciated. Okay, so now we're going to move on to public hearings, this is item, or we're going to move on to item number 9.1. This is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 17.48 and Chapter 17.52, Appendix Number 1 and Appendix Number 2 of the City of St. Helena Municipal Code relating to restaurant seat and hotel room limitations and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. And this is Mr. Heacock, our senior planner for this report.
It looks like Councilmember Dorian has his hand raised.
Just wanting to inquire about this meeting, this part of the agenda and how long it would take and what your sense is as to a break at some point. I don't want to necessarily stop the flow, but I also want to recognize that some people, you know, need to maybe take a bite deep or use the restroom or things like that, so up to you, Mayor, just wanted to make sure that we, you know, don't go too far along.
Is it, would it, I think maybe it's prudent now then because these two items sort of are our last two and they sort of work together. So shall we take a 10-minute break now? It's 7:30 and come back at 7:40 and then we'll get into the final two items. I appreciate that, Mr. Dorian. Okay, very good. So we'll take a break now and we'll see everybody in 10 minutes. Okay, very good. So we'll take a break now, and we'll see everybody in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to test my audio there. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm starting to see folks coming back. And we've got Mr. Press. What have we got? Okay, looks like we've got everybody coming back here. And we'll take a moment here. Okay. All right, it's 7:40, so we're gonna reconvene the meeting here. After a short break, we are, Cindy, are you ready to go? Cindy's ready to go. Okay, very good. So we're gonna move now into the public hearings part of our meeting. This is item 9.1. This is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 17.48, Chapter 17.52, Appendix 1 and Appendix 2 of the City of St. Helena Municipal Code relating to restaurant seat and hotel room limitations and determining the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA. And this is Mr. Heacock, our senior planner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we all know, the City of St. Helena adopted the general plan update 2040 on May 14, 2019. The general plan update contains numerous objectives, policies, and implementation measures, including policies ES 2.3 and ES 2.7, which call for removing limitations on the number of hotel rooms and restaurant seats permitted within the city. The proposed ordinance before you, ordinance amendment before you seeks to eliminate the restaurant seat and hotel room limitations described in the municipal code as required by the general plan. But this is not intended as a complete code cleanup, but it was just specific to these two items. And these sections will be coming back before the council's part of the comprehensive zoning code update. The planning commission considered the ordinance amendment on September 14, 2020, and unanimously recommended that the city council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 17.48, Chapter 17.52, Appendix I and Appendix II of the St. Helena Municipal Code relating to restaurant seat and hotel room limitations, and determine if the ordinance is exempt from the requirements of SEQA. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any initial questions from council? Any thoughts or questions? I'm seeing none. I'll move to the public. Are there any thoughts or questions from the public on this item?
I'm looking right now. Before I do that, I just want to share my screen again, just so that folks know if they want to call in, they can call 669-900-6833, and at the prompt, they'll enter 815-679-65484, and then you'll press the pound. So, and that is also posted on the agenda. I'm gonna look right now, and it appears that I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, very good. I'll bring it back now to the council. I've got a question on, as we look at this, and as it relates to hotel, restaurant development, is there a, an area here for discussion? Not tonight, certainly, but policies in terms of code compliance, so that we have sort of clear guidelines for parameters for restaurants, hotels, or any development? Mr. City manager or the city attorney, is this a place to, you know, to open a dialogue, not tonight, but just around this, this issue?
Are you, are you asking whether you could have a dialogue on that? Kind of what?
Certainly not tonight, but it's just the idea of policy. Do we have clear policy in terms of code compliance? So that we, we are clear with our partners what the parameters of what their, their permits allow and that sort of thing. So we have a, you know, sort of clear indications of how we operate and how we expect them to operate, and so that everybody has a, has an, you know, the same book and understanding as we move forward. This may not be the, the spot for it, but I'm just asking, if we're looking at removing the cap and discussing development in terms of restaurant or hotel, wanting to make sure that there's clear guidelines in terms of, you know, people, you know, operating and staying compliant with code.
Sure. So I, I think some of that will come up in the context of the kind of comprehensive update of the zoning code that we're doing. So, so that can definitely be something as Lisa Wise comes back. That could be a topic for some discussion, giving, giving additional guidance for those types of uses through, through our zoning code. So there's clear expectations as to what we would want to see.
Okay, so that could, that could fit into the, under the, that umbrella of the zoning code update in that, in that part of the discussion?
I think so. Maya may have some thoughts on that as well, but that's my immediate thought.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Is there any other? Oh, thank you, Maya. Is there any other, is there any council comment question at this point on this item? Okay, seeing, seeing none. I believe this has been vetted and gone through the process. So if we're seeing no question, is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, what about public?
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll take public comment on this item. I thought I.
I think you, you did, I think you just didn't mention this is a public hearing item. So you did, you did ask for a public comment. Priya indicated that there was no raised hands. So we should just indicate that the public hearing was opened and closed with no public comment.
Okay, very good. So, thank you. And so with that, if there's no council question or comment, would entertain a motion on this item?
I'll move approval of the recommended action. I'll second.
Councilor Cobra Seem?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Okay, very good. We will move now to item 9.2. And this is a request by Ted Hall on behalf of Long Meadow Ranch LLC for use permit amendment and design review approval in order to make operational, including additional events and minor physical changes to the existing Farmstead property at 738 Main Street in the Service Commercial Zoning District. The applicant is also requesting use permit, design review, lot merger, lot line adjustment, variance, water agreement, and development agreement approval in order to construct a new 65-room hotel with ancillary structures, including a multipurpose building, fitness center, utility building, and agricultural barns totaling approximately 53,200 square feet of building area on the property located at 1,000 Mills Lane in the Service Commercial and 20-acre agricultural districts. In accordance with Article 6 of the SEQA guidelines, a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been prepared for the proposed project. And this is also going to be presented by Mr. Heacock.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will attempt to keep this as brief as possible. The project, as you know, consists of two components. First, the applicant is requesting approval of a use permit amendment in order to memorialize all activities currently occurring on the existing Farmstead restaurant property, including those not originally approved in the 2009 Use Permit Amendment. These additional activities include retail sales in the Logan Ives House Cafe, serving breakfast items and coffee, various business and private social events occurring throughout the year, events of up to 75 people would occur daily, while events of 76 to 200 people are limited to four, four times per week. Local community events up to six times per year with up to 300 guests, and fitness classes, including yoga and Pilates beginning at 9:00 a.m. These would only be offered two to three times a week with up to 12 people in attendance, and also film screenings, which would occur up to four times per year with four showings each day and 20 to 40 attendees at each screening. Additionally, the applicant is requesting design review approval in order to add 408 square feet to the farmer's market building for the addition of a butcher shop, 355 square feet of dry storage expansion off the restaurant kitchen, and 510 square feet expansion of the storage space on the backside of the South Wing Events Building on the southeast corner. There are various other site improvements, including sound barriers, walls, et cetera. With the three building additions described, the total floor area on site would increase from just over 11,000 square feet to 12,095 square feet. The existing site provides 59 onsite spaces, including three electric car charging stations. A total of 56 parking spaces are also available a half mile away, a private lot at the corner of McCormick and Dowdell Lane. I would like to note that the staff report had 73 spaces listed. That number went down as we required landscaping for that lot. As described in the staff report, the project as proposed needs all development standards as required by the Service Commercial Zoning District of the municipal code, including setbacks, height, floor area ratio, and landscaping. Proposed additions to the existing restaurant property in minor nature, it would not present any design problems or conflicts with the required designer view criteria. Additionally, staff and the planning commission finds that the project meets and/or complies with all the required findings to approve a use permit amendment for the restaurant. project. Findings included in the attached staff report identify this compliance. Now on to the second component, which is the lodging portion. Got a little feedback there, where the applicant is requesting approval of the use permit, design review, lot line adjustment, lot merger variance, water agreement and development, development agreement in order to construct a 65-room hotel spread throughout 10 individual buildings that are configured with either six or seven guest rooms per building. Lodging buildings will total approximately 32,100 square feet and will be single story with a maximum height of 29 feet. Lodging component of the project would occur on approximately six acres of an overall 10-acre site. With the remaining four acres would be continued, continue to use for agricultural purposes. In addition to the guest rooms, the project also includes a 9,882 multipurpose building, 3,452 square foot utility and service building, 3,114 square foot spa building, a 2,652 square foot pool and fitness building. There will be two outdoor pools, including a children's pool, and there will be two 1,000 square foot agricultural barns in the northeast corner of the agriculturally zoned portion of the project site. According to the applicant, up to 65 employees split into three shifts will work daily at the property, and there will be 80 onsite parking spaces. Employees will not be allowed to park on the site or neighboring side streets, and the applicant will provide an on-call shuttle for employees to both sites at night as needed. Additionally, Mills Lane will be realigned with Grayson Avenue at Highway 29 and widened to accommodate two lanes of traffic and parallel parking on both sides of the street. 10-foot sidewalk with the landscaping strip will be added on the north side of the street to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Stop signs will be added at the north end of Lefada and at the exit from the lodging driveway entrance. With the improvements of Mills Lane, a proper connection to Lefada will be completed at the same time. Also, a sidewalk will be added to the west side of Lefada. The applicant will complete construction of the Mills Lane and Lefada street improvements prior to opening the lodging with costs allocated for the Highway 29, Highway 29 specific plan, development agreement, and conditions of approval. As far as water is concerned, the lodging and related facilities needs for potable water are identified as approximately 5.8 acre feet annually, and these will be fulfilled through a connection to the City of St. Helena Water System. Existing onsite non-potable wells will be served for agricultural and landscape activities. In the pool initially be filled with water from outside the City of St. Helena. To achieve the city's requirements for water neutrality, and the developer and city have negotiated for the developer to provide, provide an innovative program to achieve this water neutrality through the development agreement. As is set forth in the terms of development agreement, the developer has agreed to construct and install recycled water infrastructure, also known as Purple Pipe, in Mills Lane extending from Highway 29 easterly to the eastern end of Mills Lane. As the city's wastewater treatment plant transitions to tertiary treatment, the city plans to implement a water recycling system that would allow for the use of recycled water for irrigation and landscaping. And the piping that the developer has agreed to install will, at a minimum, provide the ability to irrigate landscaping at Crane Park and the fields at St. Helena Elementary School with recycled water, which would provide an annual water savings of more than two times the annual water usage of the project. The developer has agreed to fund these improvements for a cost of up to $256,549, which is more than 100,000 more than the in-lu fees that the developer would otherwise be required to pay. The project as proposed needs all development standards as required by section 17.52 in the municipal code, including setbacks, height, floor area ratio, landscaping. Staff finds that the project meets and/or complies with the required findings to approve a use permit, and the findings included in the attached resolution identify this compliance. Regarding design review, the proposed lodging project and associated structures present a unique opportunity to enhance and beautify the southern gateway into the city. Staff believes that the project has been thoughtfully designed in consideration of the site and its surroundings. Proposed buildings are a scale enassing that is consistent with the context of St. Helena's agricultural setting. Project leaves modern materials to the McFarmsdale architecture in the surrounding area. And for these reasons, staff believes that the project is consistent with the required design review criteria. Staff has no issues with the requested variance, his approval of the variance to allow for a 24/7, 365-day-a-year onsite manager opposed to requiring that a manager physically live onsite will enhance the public safety and welfare of the community. Staff has no issues with the proposed lot merger and believes that it makes sense having entirety of the, the project on one site. Similarly, staff has no concerns about the proposal lot line adjustment, which would provide a path from the lodging property to the restaurant property. As far as the development agreement is concerned, earlier this year, the city council formed an ad hoc subcommittee of two council members to advise in the negotiations with the applicant. The development agreement provides the applicant with a vested right to develop the lodging project for a term of five years with the ability to receive a five-year extension. In exchange, the applicant has committed to providing certain community benefits related to affordable housing and infrastructure, including a total contribution of $3.2 million to its affordable housing, the realignment of Mills Lane, improvements to the storm drain along Mills Lane, consistent with the city's storm drain master plan, improvements to the sidewalks as previously noted, and also construction of the Purple Pipe as previously noted. As far as SEQA is concerned, in accordance with Article 6 and Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration had been prepared for the project and included as an attachment to the staff report. This document contains a description of the proposed project, an analysis of potential environmental impacts resulting from the proposed project, as well as mitigation measures intended to reduce potentially significant impacts to less than significant levels. The draft mitigated negative declaration was circulated for a public, a 30-day public review period from May 29th, 2020 to June 29th, 2020. 34 comment letters were received during this public comment period or shortly thereafter. Some of them can, communicated concerns related to water availability, traffic, parking, housing, climate change, as well as support letters for the project. A formal response to these comments in the form of a final mitigated negative declaration was prepared and is also included in attachment to the staff report. Since, since the original agenda publication, over 70 additional comment letters, and they've been trickling in even as late as this afternoon, have been coming in, a majority of which have expressed broad support for the proposed project. Finally, the planning commission held duly noticed public hearings for the projects on September 14th, 2020 and September 17th, 2020. Were at the conclusion of the meeting on September 17th, the planning commission voted four to one, recommend that the city council, one, adopt a resolution improving a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, make the required findings and approve a use permit amendment and design review for the farmstead along Long Meadow Ranch project at 738 Main Street, and adopt a resolution improving the mitigated negative declaration mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and make the required findings to approve a lot merger, lot line adjustment, use permit, design review, variance, water agreement, and then for the project at 1,000 Mills Lane, and then adopt, third and finally, adopt an ordinance approving the development agreement between the applicant and the City of St. Helena for the project at 1,000 Mills Lane. That concludes my presentation. I think the city attorney may have a comment about the preparation of a, a SEQA document, and then I know the applicant has a presentation they would like to make as well.
Thank you. So we're going to hear from the city attorney, Mr. Walsh?
Oh, sure. I, I think there was just one, one issue that the, that the planning director wanted me address that had been coming up as kind of a recurring issue on the, on the SEQA document and, and related to the, the, the solution for the water neutrality ordinance in particular. And just as part of the development agreement and as part of the conditions of approval for the project, one of the things that we did was have the proposal that Mr. Heacock mentioned whereby the, the developer would be installing the Purple Pipe into the ground. And under your water neutrality ordinance, you have the ability to approve innovative project or innovative programs to, to reach water neutrality, rather than doing what you typically do through the, the retrofitting of existing buildings. And the, the, the developer and the subcommittee working on this project thought that this was a, an appropriate means to, to provide for the water neutrality and really seek kind of a larger scale water neutrality for the city and that it would be providing water savings above and beyond the impacts of this project. One question that's come up on occasion is, is what happens if the tertiary plant is not built in time? And so in order to address that issue, we built in essentially a performance standard that the developers required to meet in order to get a certificate of occupancy. And in the event that the, that the tertiary plant is not up and providing water to Crane Park in an amount appropriate to mitigate the, the water demand of this project by November 1st, 2022, he is required to propose alternative measures in, that would meet or exceed the water savings necessary to offset the, the water impacts of this project on the system. So we're not requiring a specific mechanism at this point. We're simply setting up a performance standard as a backstop so that in the event that we need to, we can be assured that before they receive a certificate of occupancy, there is our ability to, we have the ability to ensure water savings necessary to meet the, meet the, the requirements of the city's ordinance. And this is an appropriate means of, of setting up a mitigation me, measure under SEQA. And so we think that it does satisfy the needs both of the water neutrality ordinance and the city's SEQA requirements. So I can answer any questions on that now, or if it comes up later, I'm happy to talk about it more.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. And, and so we're going to move to Mr. Mr. Hall here in just a moment, and we, we heard a pretty comprehensive review of this just a few months ago, and then it was recently at the planning commission. So if you have a fairly succinct presentation for this evening, that would be really wonderful to hear sort of your take on it, but if we can sort of keep it in a, a framework and we can keep the conversation going.
Well, thank you, Mayor and city council members. I am aware of the time and, and also the prior investment. I do want to acknowledge that there is more than 1,000 pages of material involved in this application, and also the heavy lifting that the planning commission went through in two special meetings to be able to understand and, and address our project appropriately. I will skip through some of the slides that are in my deck. I can't throw the paper out in this format, but I, I am aware of, of the points you made, Mr. Mayor. You know, this has been a, a long time coming. The, the first presentation that I made to the city council was in August of 2016, no, 2015. So it's been five years since we really undertook this project. And what I'm going to do very quickly is give you an overview, go through some refresher material about the project description, highlight a few of the community benefits, and then just refresh you as to what the expected timetable is for the, for the project. I, I do want to comment that, that as we've gone through this process, especially at the planning commission, that the, every time we were referred to as, as developers, it kind of was an odd feeling in that, as you all know and appreciate, we're a family-owned, family-operated business. We really view ourselves as local stewards, not developers, and we're certainly not in the business of, of developing multiple projects. This is a logical extension of our longstanding business and activity for more than 30 years. You're all familiar with our committed environmental leadership, our early leadership in organic farming, our continued commitment to community philanthropy and the farmer's market. And the other really important thing to address, and I know there've been a few questions about it, is we really are locally controlled and locally led. And with the resources that our family and extended family have accumulated, and then the conventional mortgage lending resources that we'll be able to call upon, we do have substantial resources. So a way of putting a frame around this that I, I think is useful to folks is that my son Chris, who's our chief operating officer, is also on the call with me this evening. But this is a picture of our organization chart, and the people that you're already familiar with, with our existing business, Adam Kim, who's our Director of Destination Operations, Stephen Barber, our culinary leader, our finance staff and our marketing staff are all already in place. And in fact, af, after we implement what is in effect, an addition of overnight lodging to our existing business, Adam will have another general manager reporting to him, which would be the lodging general manager, in addition to the general store manager and the restaurant general manager. And it's, this picture, I think, should reassure you that we really will be true to our local roots. There's not a large external entity coming in to somehow change what you come to know and understand. And I think also this picture helps you understand why, on the margin, the number of employees that we're adding and the, the relative impact from that additional employment is much less than it would be if we were creating a de novo hotel. So the, the new pieces of the puzzle are the, are there in purple. There are a couple of items that are, are not on this chart for simplification purposes, most important of which is our, our existing facilities maintenance staff, which will be able to operate with this group on change. As Aaron pointed out, there's, there's really three things that you're being asked to do tonight. The first is to prove that the use permit modification for existing farmstead. There are no expansion of, beyond our current use. There is a clarification of our ancillary activities. We provided some, some measures as to the level of private parties and meetings, but they are all within the boundaries of our long-established practice. The second is the addition of overnight lodging to our, our, which is the, the new use permit, which involves also design review and lot line adjustment. And important to note there, again, that we're requesting no variances from zoning requirements. There is a, a minor variance to provide for a 24-by-7 manager as opposed to a resident manager, but otherwise the project's entirely consistent with the, the city's physical standards. The development agreement, which was negotiated over multiple negotiating sessions with the subcommittee is appointed by the, the city council, and we're very grateful for council members Knudsen and Coburnstein's significant involvement, as well as the city staff. There are several things to highlight in the summary of that development agreement. The first is that we're required to retain control for the duration of the agreement. And the, the rationale for that from the city's point of view is that you need to know who your counterparty is. So this project can't be sold to Marriott or somebody as soon as we get this approval. In fact, we have to maintain control or, or put somebody in control if we were to try to change it that is entirely acceptable to the city. So this is a major issue. We have agreed to $3.2 million of housing impact fee, which is in lieu of a $202,000 fee that would otherwise be required by the ordinance. The water impact arrangement with the Purple Pipe, the, the point to highlight here is that the $256,000, which is more than the, in lieu of fee by, by more than $100,000, is not really the cost of the Purple Pipe. It's the, it's the incremental cost of putting the pipe in an otherwise very expensive excavation and ditch that's being accomplished only because we are also realigning Mills Lane and taking on the stormwater project, which in total is more than $5 million. In addition, the city's going to benefit by our construction of sidewalks at Lefada, the installation of a, a new signal at Main Street. And in, in addition to all of these traffic improvements, we are, we have agreed to pay nearly $600,000 of traffic impact fees at the time we get the certificate of occupancy. So there's three things for you tonight. The first resolution relates to existing farmstead. The second relates to the, the addition of lodging, and the third relates to the agreement, the development agreement. We think that this project sets new standards for the way the City of St. Helena should be thinking about these kinds of projects. You could really think of it as a four-part report card. You could really think of it as a four-part uh report card. Uh the first four are housing, water, traffic and climate. And the fifth is the fiscal impact and we think we uh achieve well on all of these dimensions and I'll elaborate this as we go. Through in housing, the the commitments of leading a major project, uh conservation as well as the the installation of the purple pipe. Really significant and major street and intersection improvements and we're very proud of the innovation we've done in other places in our. Operation, but we are truly leading the way here in terms of of our uh physical plant. In in terms of minimizing climate impact. The on the fifth element of our uh project, the contribution, once we are up. And fully running is very substantial. By twenty twenty-four, uh we will increase the the general fund by seventeen and a half percent. Over its current levels. So that's two point six uh million dollars. The vast majority of that is coming from a T O T of two point two million dollars. Uh we are going to continue to serve our agrarian community. Uh it's important to conven- continue to communicate. You know who we are. You know what we do. Um we're authentically farm-to-table. We've been longstanding commitment to the community through our corporate community program. And we intend to continue that agrarian community focus. Our project will respect the existing farmstead as you know it. Uh we don't expect uh by any radical change. The 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 experience should be seamless in one part of the campus to the next. And the the in in these uh changes have been made nearly, started nearly ten years ago. I would point out. One item here is that the conversion when Kevin Tuil retired and we took over the nursery property. Um was in fact done with a a properly authorized building permit in two thousand and twelve. So our construction of the auxiliary kitchen and the meeting and party spaces uh as well as our lawn uh were all. Uh appropriately addressed. I know there've been some question about that in the in the past. Um thirteen hundred square feet is the total amount of change. Um the largest components of that are two storage buildings, which you can see in this drawing. Uh in the course of this exercise, we realized we had some opportunities to to undertake some sound abatement. Uh in particular, to reduce the propagation of of crowd noise at our outdoor bar, which is the addition of a sound wall. Uh and the and a particularly more effective perimeter fence to the east. And significantly, we're going to add butchery, which will be a community benefit in that we'll be able to sell fresh meats in addition to our continuing uh farmer's market. With regard to the lodging addition, our aspiration is to create a unique experience for our guests, one that's uh. Uh immersed in agriculture. On the slide you see in the lower uh left-hand corner, a uh. An artist's depiction of of how this will lay out. Our existing farmstead is in the lower left-hand corner and uh. Significantly, we will continue to focus on uh four acres of uh agriculture. The section, this property has split zoning. And we are honoring that. So the service commercial component of the zoning is where the lodging is located. And we will continue with pleasure to uh manage the the agriculturally zoned component. Uh you can see the addition of the walking path and which results from the exchange of property with Doctor Catherine Gold. Of the same, you know, veterinary hospital. We are providing for uh learning spaces and through the multipurpose building. Much of that building will be for lodging guests only, for breakfast service and room service and meeting rooms and so on for hotel guests. We do plan to move our sh- existing chef's table from Logan Ives House to this location and to conduct agricultural education programs. Some of which will be open to the public. We um vetted this issue very thoroughly with the Planning Commission. We have uh uh limits on the amount of uh third-party or off premise uh participation. In those programs so that we're fully compliant with the available parking. Uh we uh are providing bicycles for every room uh and building a network of paths which should create a. A very accessible and and pleasant uh experience. Uh when it's all said and done, we have a. Uh a a a bountiful basket of parking. We have fifty ninety parking spaces at the existing farmstead. That's. Uh more than the fifty-seven that are required. Uh primary auto access will come on Mills Lane, so we're not congesting. Uh Charter Oak. Uh we're providing seventy parking spaces uh for the lodging and fifty-six off-site parking. Uh the the eighty parking spaces for uh lodging are are seen here in this drawing and what's fun about this is that. We plan to uh take advantage of that space with a commercial fruit orchard. Uh employees will park on a fifty-six parking space uh lot on uh Dow Dell and McCormick. Uh it's a relatively short four-minute walk to the entrance to the 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 site, the campus on Mills Lane. And it's in that area uh where we will construct the additional uh sidewalks for uh uh Lefata. Uh we have uh forty, the need for forty-six uh spaces is done through our traffic analysis or parking analysis. And we have fifty-six provided for. Uh so uh very briefly, uh in these categories of benefit. Uh little kind of at a little more specific level, we're bringing uh uh eight, I think, really uh significant things to the community. Workforce housing for maybe as many as a hundred and fifty people. We're creating net new water, uh probably ten acre feet minimum of. New water availability for the city, more foot traffic for Main Street, safer Main Street for pedestrians, better traffic flow. More parking, less flooding and uh reduced carbon emissions. Uh we've already discussed the. The equivalent uh housing impact fees. I just would comment that the three point two million dollars continues to set up extraordinary precedent. The hotel that was approved in Calistoga the last few days uh only required a half acre set aside as a donation. For housing uh uh for affordable housing, which is uh doesn't rival. What we've done here in uh in St. Helena with our project. We believe we can help put that to great use. A million dollars of it is set aside for a site acquisition of a specific project that we refer to as the Phelps Village. Uh the schematic drawings here on the bottom of this chart. What's significant is that depending on the number of units that ultimately are created. Uh certainly has the capacity to do more than thirty. We are providing additional housing for a hundred to a hundred and fifty people. Uh in uh our community. It's located on a site which should not be controversial. It's on Main Street. Uh not surrounded by any existing residential uh properties, uh is part of the relocation. Uh site of uh of Mills Lane, which also creates some uh potential aesthetic design opportunities if. This project moves forward in a timely way that coincident with where we are. I think by now you, we all understand that the that we are generating net new water through the addition of the purple pipe. Uh one of the hard issues that we negotiated, just to be clear with everybody in the development agreement, is it's the city's obligation to complete the water treatment plant. By November first, twenty twenty-two and the financial incentives of the city are very large. Because without the completion of that water treatment plant on that deadline, which is before we expect to be open, the city will gain none of the benefit of the. Of the the T O T tax uh revenue and the uh improvement in commerce. That would apply to uh our downtown uh merchants. Our ability to create uh traffic for downtown, I think, is very exciting. Uh it's. Support, we're surprisingly close to where the center of downtown, which we consider to be the corner of Hunt and Maine. Uh it's only about four city blocks uh walk from the um from the cafe at at Farmstead. Uh and there's a very acceptable bicycle route down Charter Oak, across Allison, up Pope, yeah, over to Churchill. Uh and to uh Hunt. Uh and as we've thought about this, that's a wonderful potential location. For the city, perhaps with our support, to uh place some uh bark, bike parking uh capability. That would allow then the core of Main Street to be served by uh that bike route and as you envision possible uses of bikes in the future. The city is very convenient to consider how people would be able to move up Railroad Avenue uh from that uh from that location.
Mr. Hall, if if we could look at about a three-minute timeframe to sort of shape the the rest of the.
I'm Jeff, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. I'm 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 right on it. Um uh we're going to improve the crosswalk at uh Charter Oak. Uh and further improve the traffic flow by uh changing the very difficult intersection where Mills Lane currently. Uh intersects with Main Street uh with the the newly installed uh uh Grayson Light. It's important to note here that we're going to have uh synchronized four-way traffic signal and new pedestrian crossings uh at a level railroad crossing. Mills Lane will, uh the Stormwater Project will uh provide for um. Uh the s- resolution of a a large and continuing flooding problem in this area. Is illustrated by the the city's recent uh census of of its stormwater system. Uh and we will contribute to the improvement of air quality by essentially operating our facility off the grid with. Uh some significant innovations in terms of uh the use of a thermal battery, electrical vehicles and of course our continued. Uh promotion of bicycle use. So uh we will uh be providing uh. Over five million dollars of critical infrastructure. Uh uh in each case, we are paying a substantial share. On the Mills Lane uh component, about a million dollars. We're advancing one point four million dollars for the benefit of the city. Will be repaid to us by T O T, as provided for in the development agreement and similarly a four hundred thousand dollar share of the Storm Grain Project. Uh and we're advancing to the city two million dollars for that purpose. So taken all together, we are bringing uh. Uh to the city about ten million dollars in total fees and capital expenditures, which is a a. Very substantial and significant sum is from i- in the context of our project and I know you all can judge that this is a significant. Significant sum in the context of the city. Uh so we think uh our project is right for our community and its values. It's really not a new hotel. It's part of an existing food and beverage business to which we're adding overnight stays. You've seen that we have the management team and significant staff already in place. It's all about agriculture. Uh it's not glamour. Uh we are truly locally owned and operated and we believe we're going to bring really significant. Physical improvements, but also quality of life improvements to our our community. Um with approval tonight, uh and a lot of hard work on a lot of people in front of us. Uh our aspiration is to be able to open by uh early twenty twenty-three. So that completes my presentation. Again, thank you all for your patience and uh the the terrific cooperative support that we've had in. Putting together this very complicated project from uh all of the city staff, the planning staff, the public work staff. Uh in particular have been uh terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Hall, for the presentation. Um I'm gonna move now uh to our council to see if there are any initial comments or questions from the council. Uh before we go to public comment. I am looking and seeing and seeing none. Uh I'm going to then open um the public comment. Um Ms. Nixon.
Yes, thank you. Um we do have public comment for this item. Um last name Stevenson. I'm going to uh. Allow you to speak and then you can unmute yourself. And please state your full name. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, uh this is Mary Stevenson. I'm speaking for our town, St. Helena, the local affordable housing advocacy group. And we fully support the project of for Farmstead Hotel. Uh number one, because it's, we think it's the right project for St. Helena at this point in time. It uh provides uh new revenues to the city with a minimal impact and we also uh wanna point out that. This project is setting a new precedent for of uh housing impact for hotels for the whole county. Um by uh extraordinary means and for St. Helena to do this will help the entire county so that other hotels will not be approved. Without a similar um amount of housing impact fees or revenues being provided. So we think this is a great project and we think you should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional?
Very well.
At this point.
Um give me one second. Um I'm looking to see if there is additional public comment. Again, you can call in, you can use the raise hand feature. I am looking right now to see if there is public comment for this item and I'm not seeing any additional raised hands.
Okay, very good. And we received quite a bit of public comment through uh email uh over the last uh many months. Um we'll give it just another minute here, see if anybody checks in and we'll bring it back to council. I'm not seeing anybody. Ms. Nixon?
No, I am not seeing any more raised hands. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I'll bring it back to to council. Are there any initial comments or questions here? Well, I can jump in. Oh, I'm seeing Mr. Doring, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I I know one of the questions that was raised at the Planning Commission with respect to the shared employees and the implications. Should uh ownership change uh either on the farmstead, restaurant side or the lodging side? Uh was a was a condition added to address that issue? And and could somebody describe that that condition? I I, by the way, I watched both planning, I watched both Planning Commission hearings uh and I've read all of, I've read everything except all the charts. That were attached to the Crane Report. That was a little mind-numbing, but uh I didn't, I didn't get that answer. So if somebody could address that and I have other questions too, but that one I'd like to start with.
Mister Mister Doring, I could, the staff could probably uh address this officially, but the the practical business implication is that. Sure, a condition of approval was added that required uh the a review by the uh city. Of the operating plan of any subsequent owner, if the owners, if the if the ownership were separated. Uh so it would pro- it would enable two separate owners to continue to operate it within the confines of the existing use permit. If there's anything about their operating plan, it would require an amendment to the use permit as as you as we all would expect.
Okay.
Yeah, I can just add to that. A a condition of approval was added to the resolution for both the seven thirty and one thousand Mills Lane project. That requires um if there's a change in ownership, that the planning director be notified within thirty days. And then the project will be taken before the Planning Commission to review any operational changes that may occur due to the change in ownership. And should operational changes result uh that that change on potential impacts related to the project, uh use permit will be required.
Okay. Um now with respect to the uh the off-site parking for the employees. Uh I know that number has gone down from seventy-three to fifty-six because of the landscaping issue. I just have some questions about that. First of all, does does the city have a copy of the parking lease, parking lot lease? Has it been reviewed?
Yeah, I I believe we do have a copy of it.
Yeah, um. Yes, you do.
Okay, I didn't see that in the package. I was looking for that to see who the owner was. Could could you describe the sort of the terms of that? Is that exclusive parking to your project or is it intended to be shared by by others? Is that exclusive parking to your project, or is it intended to be shared by others?
It's exclusive, it's, we lease the entire site, including the warehouse that's on the, on the property, and it's exclusive to us. And we also have a requirement in the conditions of approval that if we were to not sustain that parking area, that we would be required to find a replacement.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And if you are also, excuse me, Mr. Doring, if you were, if you're also asking whether the parking was adequate, was that one of your questions?
Well, I, I know it went down from 73 to 56, and I did see the Crane Report discuss that, and the analysis where you think it, because of the staffing changes, that you think, the analysis suggests that it would be 20% less than that number on a typical day, 15 to 20%. But I also saw something in the Crane Report that said that the need was between 53 and 56. So I was a little confused by that. Maybe someone could speak to that issue. Oh, you shifted over here. Okay. If you can talk, talk to me about that a little bit, that'd be good. Yes.
Well, first of all, what, what we've done is a hour-by-hour staffing analysis and identified the, the peak. We did that analysis independently, and then it was subsequently reviewed by Mr. Crane, which we can ask him to speak to it. The adjustment that you're referring to, Mr. Doring, has to do with what would be normally expected for people to walk, bike, or carpool to the location. We have 25% of our staff actually work and live in St. Helena, and a surprising percentage of them also bike and walk. So we have already ample example of, of that taking place. But, but even with the, without that reduction, we have ample parking because we have 56 spaces. But if you'd like to hear from Mr. Crane, we can ask him to speak.
I, I think that answers the question. I, I think that's fine. I just wanted to get information there. I may have some suggestions on the condition of approval, adding a little bit more language there, but we'll talk about that later. With respect to the, the parking at, at the Farmstead Restaurant, I noted that there were 48 approved, and you had 48, but that you added 11. When were, when was that added and for what purpose? The 11 parking spaces?
We discovered that we could restripe the lot in a far more efficient fashion. That was done probably at least five years ago. Chris, can you speak to how long ago that was?
It was more than five years ago. So what occurred wasn't an expansion of the paved asphalt areas or anything. It was a reconfiguration of the striping, as Ted described, so that we could maximize the available space.
Okay. I noted, you know, I spent a fair amount of time, I don't know if anybody else has a copy of this, this is the Highway 29 specific plan, which sort of governs a lot of what we're talking about right now. And I, I noticed a detail, and I haven't seen it really pointed out, maybe your architect or you, Mr. Hall, could, could speak to this, but it appears that there needs to be a hundred-foot buffer between your buildings and any agriculture. And I guess I'm particularly concerned about, I guess it's the Northeast, maybe it's a Staten property, that, that ag. Have you met that buffer between that agriculture, those vines basically, and your, I guess, I didn't see, maybe it's a multipurpose facility? Is there a hundred-foot buffer between those two, as far as you know?
The that item is a mitigation measure to protect people for agricultural drift. There's it would be a taking for there to be a restriction on an adjacent parcel to be, to have a setback to address that question by the action of the, of the adjoining parcel.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, it is a mitigation measure. It says, "Future development on the violent station and the domain properties shall maintain a minimum 100-foot buffer between the habitable structures and the nearest injured plantings." And I, I understand the taking issue, but I'm just wondering, is, is your multipurpose room within that 100-foot buffer or, or outside of it? I guess that's the question.
It's within the 100-foot buffer.
Okay. All right.
But the agricultural mitigation and drift is not our responsibility, and there are ample regulations to, to prohibit that, that concern.
Okay, and that'd be something that we need to look at a little further. I, I don't want to debate you on that because that's not my area of expertise.
Well, the state law prohibits drift, Mr. Doring.
I'll stop there. I have other questions regarding the, the development agreement. Maybe we can hear from the, the council members who worked on the subcommittee to, to speak about that. I had some questions about the Purple Pipe and how that all came about, but I do appreciate it. By the way, I must commend you on, on your presentation. Must commend you on the thought process in this whole project. I do think it fits within our community. I, I, I'm going to ask hard questions because we're, we're trained to, to review a project without fear or favor. So I know a lot of people support you, and I support you, and I want you to be successful. But I also want to make sure that we get it right and benefit our citizens. So sometimes my questions kind of appear to be cross-examining. I'm not intending to do that. I just want to get the answers so like, I can make a good decision. But I'll, I'll defer to others for, for now and come back to you on, on the development agreement. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Doring. I will, I do want to say thank you to our subcommittee who worked on the development agreement, Ms. Koberstein and Mr. Knutson, you know, working with the applicant, working with the staff. Ms. Koberstein, Mr. Knutson, do you have any thoughts initially on the development agreement as Mr. Doring brought up? Ms. Koberstein, do you have any thoughts at this point on it?
I don't know if we have any questions from Paul yet about the development agreement. But just speaking about it generally, I think it was a big step forward for St. Helena in many ways. The term of the agreement, the housing, the water. And it was a, a good negotiation on both sides. Had a lot of input from our staff, our consultants, our city attorney, worked through a lot of hard issues about cost sharing. And I, I think it will serve the city well as this project is developed. But if somebody has a specific question, I'm happy to try to answer it, or perhaps David can.
So, you have any? Yeah, they all, am I on mute? No. The only thing I'd like to add is I thought it was actually one of the most balanced sort of public-private negotiations I've been a part of. As Mr. Hall rightly referenced, that's not true of a lot of other cities, as we know. And I think all of us put a lot of care and attention into it. I think there's some things I'm a little nervous about, and what I'm nervous about is delivering the recycled water down the, you know, that's such a key and important part, as I think I mentioned in one of our discussions with the team, which was Mary and myself and staff and Ted and his team, and we met multiple times over the summer, was there just aren't enough toilets to retrofit anymore. That's just not a solution for saving water. And it's not ironic, but it's noted that today we were informed by our Public Works Director that we may go to sort of a even higher phase water conservation measures at the moment, partly because we've used some of our water to fight the fires. So we have to be, we've got a really precious and not infinite resource, and I think that's my biggest concern, that we mobilize the city to make sure that we're delivering the recycled water to Mr. Hall's property and beyond. And then the other thing is the only disappointment that I have, I think we handled so many issues, and I, I think the development plan is pretty respectful, actually in so many ways, to what makes St. Helena unique and special. I'm sorry, we couldn't relook at the Grayson Mills Route 29 intersection because it's awkward, and I love the fact that, you know, Napa is heading, and the whole county and Cal, State of California is heading towards roundabouts. And they can prove to be safer and also keeps traffic moving more smoothly, but it appears that the die was cast on that one. So I could not get that reopened, unfortunately. That's a disappointment for me. And that's it. That's just table setting for, for the other council members that weren't in the meetings.
Thank you. I've got a few comments. I don't know if Ms. Chateau has some she would like to go with first, if she's got some thoughts at this point.
Sure. Yeah, my thoughts are just that I'm really excited about this project. It hits all the boxes for me. It's very environmentally conscious, their commitment to climate change and water conservation is what's particularly exciting to me. The Purple Pipe Project is everybody's been talking about, but I, I am super committed to that. I think that that's going to make the biggest difference for our city to be able to provide that recycled water. And as Councilmember Knutson spoke about, that's what really changes the game for being able to have more and bigger water savings for our whole city in a new way, and that's just so big. This project's great for our downtown, which we need so much, and for our business community. The location's fantastic. The architecture looks fantastic. They're making such a significant investment in affordable housing with that $3.2 million. It's actually going to address us being able to build for workforce housing when so many of the projects before don't even come close to the true cost. I'm so grateful for that. And then just the TOT money, there's just so much with this project that's positive for St. Helena that I think just by even us being able to approve it tonight, it's going to show our community at a really hard time that there are really good things to look forward to, that highlights all of the things that are so fantastic about this agricultural community that's also sophisticated and just a wonderful place to live.
Thank you. I've got a few comments here. First, you know, I think it set a very high bar on a number of items here. I'm certainly inclined to be supportive. I think, as Mr. Doring said, there, there certainly are always some hard questions and challenging questions, but I think the idea is to get things shaped to be at the highest level they can be. I had a, a good conversation with Mr. Hall. I've had a conversation separately with Mr. Hardy from the Planning Commission, just to sort of over, you know, get a more of an overview on some of the specifics of the project. I'll just go through a number of the things that, that we talked about and where, where I'm coming from on them. With, with water, I think the Purple Pipe is a great step forward. We are going to be moving into the world of tertiary recycled water, and having a project like this to sort of help be the scouting project forward, to, to help model and map how we're going to do this is really important. So I think the timing on that is, is excellent. Again, thanking Ms. Koberstein and Mr. Knutson on the development agreement that really brought this, this aspect forward. As I mentioned to Mr. Hall the other day, as he increases his commitment to the city of St. Helena, we all have to understand water, how our water works here, how our surface water and groundwater interconnect. We're seeing good movement forward with LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission, on understanding how regionally our water works throughout the county and how we might work, work together throughout the county. Also, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency is, is working, and so these projects happening at the same time will help us both in the county and in the city understand how we manage water. Water is part, it's a prime equity component in whatever we do, whatever we invest in, water is critical. And so I think there's been a good focus on that here, and I, I hope that the dialogue with a partner like this helps us in the dialogue with the county in how we manage our surface water, groundwater relationship. So I'm seeing that as a, as a real positive. There's two aspects that I think we can tie into anything we're doing right now. We have a, a climate proclamation that, that we adopted as a city last year, recognize, and Napa County did as well, recognizing the year 2030 as where we need to head towards in terms of carbon drawdown. And so with our partners, whoever they may be, really recognizing that proclamation that this is where we need to go together. Governor Newsom talked about, in relation to COVID, a dimmer switch, the ability to, to adjust as we go. As we look towards 2030 with climate, we, we know we can't just do everything we do until 2029 and then all of a sudden stop. We've got to ease towards 2030. So I think recognizing that climate proclamation, recognizing that this is a true and real issue that the next generation will, will be facing, and we want to make sure we, we, we create a path for them to have, have the, the best environment they can. So I brought up that climate proclamation. I think that's something that any project coming into St. Helena should embrace. Next week, I'm very excited, we're having a special city council meeting to talk about our racial and social justice issues. We're going to be bringing forth a resolution that was modeled after a resolution that came forward in Napa on systemic racism, on systemic bias. And I think this is also a critical document as we talk about social equity and real solutions towards that. The document is important. It recognizes our Latinx community. It recognizes our LGBTQ community. It recognizes our indigenous community. And I think that if we all take to heart that, that document and the work we're going to do next week, every project we do can champion and support all aspects of our community. And so this is a, an opportunity with a project coming in to look at those two items, the climate proclamation and the, the racial social equity work we're doing, and, and tie whatever we do to those. So we, we create real solutions and innovative solutions that others can, can follow. The housing part of this ties into the social equity. Housing is, that's where, that's where we can create more of a fair playing field. Ultimately, the idea of homeownership or equity built into homes, that's the American dream. That's how the middle class gets created with this slowly accruing nest egg. And so I hope that as we look at housing for this project and other projects, we also, we, we, at the same time, work towards not just providing housing, but providing methods for those who, who live and work here to build equity in their housing, whether it's through ownership or savings programs that help build that nest egg to get into homeownership. So I see the housing element of, of this as, as really critical and innovative, and I'm very appreciative that that's a big part of this. Mr. Hall and I talked about economic diversification. We, I recognize certainly that visitation is important in St. Helena, but it is important that we have other eggs in the basket, so to speak. We've recognized through COVID and fires that if we're fully dependent on just one type of revenue generator, we're, we are not as strong overall. So diversification in our economy is important. We talked about diversified ag and some opportunities with diversifying our ag, as much as we love our, our wine industry, which I grew up in and very proud of. I think there's also opportunities to diversify in ag, and Mr. Hall's already been demonstrating progress on those fronts. So I was happy to hear about that. We touched briefly on waste management issues in Napa County, and, and we'll continue talking about those. I had one question on, as we look at, maybe Mr. Heacock can answer this. The mitigation The mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Is there just a little information on what that is or how that works?
Sure. So essentially what that document is, is it's a compiled all the mitigation measures that are contained within the mitigated negative declaration into one easily accessible document that lists the mitigation measure, lists when the mitigation is supposed to take place, and who is responsible for that.
So that gives us a, a clear look at both what it is and then, in a sense, timelines and, and responsibility.
Exactly.
And is that a model that then can be used on other projects, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a typical SEQA requirement. So all mitigated neg decks have one of those. But potentially, we could use a model like that and swap out the mitigation measures for conditions of approval. That's something that we could look at.
Okay. Are there other council comments at this point? Questions?
I, I, I have a question regarding the Purple Pipe. So as I, as I understand it, as I read the Highway 29 specific plan on pages 35 and 36, there's a whole section there on recycled water. And one section says, you know, says, "In advance of delivery of recycled water to the specific plant area, recycled water lines are to be installed, parallel in domestic water lines." That's on page 35. Then on page 36, item four, item five, it says, "Recycled water lines shall be installed by project developers simultaneously with the installation of domestic water lines." So I guess my question to Mr. Hall and maybe to the subcommittee and to anyone else who cares is what additional benefit are we getting that is not already required under the, the specific plan with respect to the installation of the Purple Pipe?
Well, first of all, the, the, the relocation of Mills Lane only extends from Lafada to Main Street.
Right.
The length of the Purple Pipe is the entire length of Mills Lane. And so it was a negotiated component of the development agreement for us to take on the oversight and the construction of the, of the long storm drain section. So none of that is required by the, the specific plan. And in fact, if the, the section that you're reading would all result in a short stub really going, have much less practical effect than by this much, much larger and significant project. So the real insight here is that because we've taken on a project of nearly $5 million in total expense, we are able to lay this Purple Pipe, which under any other circumstance, the city of St. Helena, in the foreseeable future, would not have been able to mount that level of capital expenditure. Admittedly, it wouldn't have been $5 million, but it would have been a very substantial sum to be able to, to accomplish that total excavation. So we can assign the incremental value to that section if it exceeds the requirement that we otherwise would have had to expend.
Was that the thought process of the committee, I guess? I just want to make sure that the, this $256,000 of value is commensurate with the additional benefit or something beyond, above and beyond what we would already be, be receiving based on the requirements of the Highway 29 specific plan. I don't, I, I don't know how that number was derived necessarily, but I just want to make sure we're getting every dollar we can get.
Well, you're getting, well, Mr. Doring, you're getting $10 million. And, and certainly the, the stormwater component of this project was never anticipated as being a burden for this developer at, at the time the specific plan was put in place. And in fact, the expectation was that the, the city's stormwater system was already in place. So one of the things delayed our project for substantial period was the discovery that the stormwater inlet at the corner of Lafada and Mills was, was a pipe to nowhere. And there were errors in the city's drawings, and we worked together with Public Works and others over the, over nearly two years to resolve this question, and we've taken on the burden of, of actually resolving it financially.
So, so Mr. Hall and Vice Mayor, the short answer is, this is far more efficient. The trench is going to be there. You know, yes, yes, yes to, you know. I don't know, Ms. Koberstein, if you have a longer answer.
I don't know that I have a longer answer. As I understand that section you were reading, Paul, you're talking about the developer putting in water lines and putting in Purple Pipe at the same time. And this Purple Pipeline is not running where the water line is. It's going way far beyond. I'd, I'd also like our staff to just address the Purple Pipe situation with respect to Grayson and what the plans are for that, if you could.
Erica, do you want to speak to Grayson and the current design as well as existing pipe?
Sorry, now it's difficult to unmuting myself. Yes, so we have designed the, the Grayson, under the reconstruction of Grayson Avenue right now, we were made aware that there was potentially an existing pipeline there. We have not been able to locate that one or any records of one. But we did get a cost from a consultant for $15,000 that has worked at a senior, senior civil engineer could also design in-house if we're successful in, in landing that applicant. But the design's not the hard part, it's going to be the construction and the funding to install that pipe in Grayson, as well as the connection from Mills to the wastewater treatment plant. So we're actively seeking proposals from the current consultant during the upgrades of the wastewater treatment plant, HydroScience. They were excited to hear that we were looking at this and that this project was, was helping, you know, get a section of pipe put in the ground. So we're still waiting on that cost. They, they've been helping the city as well on the metal wood tank situation. So I'm going to get back on them to get us that proposal for completing that portion of the design or at least get us a cost for it. But again, if we're successful in getting another licensed civil engineer, we would have the ability to design that work in-house.
Yeah, I'm going to have to jump in for a moment. We're going to have to have a motion to extend the meeting here. I, I think we're getting fairly close, but we're not quite there. It's just about nine o'clock. So do we have a motion to extend the meeting past nine here?
I move that we extend.
Move.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Koberstein?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Ms. Smithies, I apologize for interrupting there if you were not finished with the thought. I see Mr. Kober, Knudsen with a thought.
Yeah. So I think this is new information. The information during our negotiation with Mr. Hall was that the Purple Pipe was already in existence on the length of Grayson. So that is new information, at least. I think it should be flagged as such.
No, I, I think the information was that it was planned to go into Grayson, and we were working on the actual improvement plans for Grayson. That's one of the projects that's in the works right now and that the pipe would be incorporated in it, not.
Yes, and in fact, the language of the development agreement specifically identifies the Grayson portion that has to be completed by the city.
I think I was expecting the cross Main Street to Grayson component rather than the Grayson component itself. But I'll look for additional information from Ms. Smithies as it becomes available. Thanks.
Well, one thing I, I think is clear is that the collaborative nature of, of, of this work with the applicant and the city and the council has been very positive. And so I, I believe working forward, that will continue. I think that, that is certainly the, the spirit of, of which this has moved forward. So, so I just want to recognize that.
Could somebody speak to the issue of the Phelps Project and where that is? How far along that is? Is there an option? Is there, is there any negotiations going on that either our town is involved with or Mr. Hall's involved with? Or is that somewhat speculative at this point?
Well, I can speak to it broadly. If you want to invite a public comment from Ms. Stevenson, I'm sure she'd be prepared to comment on it. The, the conundrum here, of course, is that there are no funds until the city council acts and we commit moving forward on the project. And so it's speculative by definition until the council makes its decision. There are active conversations. There are, have been exchanges of documents, and it's been vigorously pursued by our town with the expectation that we would fulfill our commitment of providing a million dollars for the purposes of property acquisition. But there can be no contract because there's no, the, our town is not a viable counterparty absent the action by the city council.
Mr. Doring, does that answer your question? Would you like me to open a public comment for Ms. Stevenson too?
I, I think that's fine for now. I think that, I understand that. I understand the circumstances. First of all, I think it is a, you know, people use the word unprecedented or whatever. That is a, a huge contribution. I'm very proud to be a part of, of a, of a project where the applicant has made such a huge contribution to affordable housing. There is no doubt about it. Now, we, we could maybe have a little disagreement in terms of, well, should that be the model going forward? You know, I was somewhat involved in the Silage Project in Calistoga where they, they actually built 24 units. They partnered with an affordable housing developer. So this is similar to that, but they actually got it built. I think Bartasano and Yavville also built the housing. So I would just offer that it's not really relevant to this and it's not going to change my mind, but there are a lot of different models that we should strive for. Ultimately, it's, it's always been my opinion that the developer who's building is in the best position to actually build the affordable housing. Now, there are a lot of issues involved with that, of course, but you ensure that it gets done. And my fear is that, that million dollars and, or, and the additional 2.2 will go into a fund, but we'll still be struggling to find a place and to actually get it done. But I, no doubt, Mr. Hall, I totally commend you for this portion of your project.
Well, thank you, Mr. Doring. And I just, I, I'd say, I'm not, I think a thorough examination of what other developers have done might lead you to some different conclusions, especially as it relates to Bartasano, because we've studied these things and is, is a lead-up to this. But I, I will say that we've been committed from the beginning to actually cause something to happen. And I've been working for well over two years with our town to identify a site and to create a productive process. And we entered into our memorandum of understanding to dedicate a million dollars to, to site acquisition in 2018. So this speaks to my very first slide, is that we view ourselves in our role here as stewards of our community and we're not a developer. And come hell or high water, we're going to get something built.
Thank you. Thank you. Am I seeing any other comments or questions from council at this point? I am not. I'm not seeing any. Mr. Knudsen, looks like he's leaning back in his chair. So with that, if we've sort of pushed forward through the discussion, are we at a point where somebody is interested in making a motion? Let me go to my agenda here.
Can I just ask Mr. Hall one, one other question as regard, this is with respect to the off-street employee housing? And I know there's a condition, I think it's number 18, that's been added, that if that lease is terminated, that you'll, you know, seek other alternatives. Would you be willing to slightly allow that to be amended so that the termination, either termination or reduction in the number of those parking spaces, that you would give us reasonable notice if that happened?
Well, I.
As a city?
It's, it feel, it, I, of, of course, I mean, it's a little bit of belt suspenders, though. I mean, if, if, if our total number of parking spaces declines, we're no longer in compliance with our use permit, and we're going to do an annual review of our use permit, and we're going to have to resolve it. And we have every intention of complying. So, but if it would give you all greater comfort, be happy to, to add that. One of the things I omitted in the, in my presentation in this period of time, but I do think it's important for you all to understand, is that, you know, there is no precedent for projects of this kind to have all of its parking off-street. There's no business in St. Helena that has all of its parking off-street. And in addition to everything that we've discussed today, we're adding 42 parking spaces on Mills Lane, which will be available for overflow parking for the Performing Arts Center at the high school and for other high school events, and, and will be accessible by virtue of the, of the improved crosswalk and, and, and its like. So, you know, we're, we're exceeding any plausible expectation of, of the city's parking capacity through this project.
You know, and that nuance with respect to the parking on Mills Lane, I didn't catch that, so I do appreciate that. I did not know that. That is, that is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if we bring it back now and take a look, and we have three components here. The recommendation, there are three, there's adopting a resolution approving the mitigated neg deck, adopt a resolution approving, for the, there's three different aspects here. Is there somebody interested in making a motion? Did we, did we have anything that we added to that? Mr. Presswich? Or Mr. Heacock? If somebody were to put forward the motion, would, would there need to be any changes to it or is what is written here what we need to push forward?
I believe what is written is what you need to push forward unless, if you guys want to make the change to, it's condition of approval 21, adding that they should notify the city if they're going to lose their lease option, you would want to add "as amended" to the motion.
To me, that.
I would like to see that.
I, but I think that sounds like sound, sound measure.
One, one other thing I noticed in some of the resolutions, other than the, the ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance that applies to the development agreement, I don't see any mention that the project is consistent with the Highway 29 specific plan and any of the findings. And I believe that that has to be made, if I'm not mistaken, that that has to be an actual finding by the, by the city council, that the project is consistent with the Highway 29 specific plan. I don't, maybe I missed it, it's a lot of detail. I saw a, a reference in the, the development agreement ordinance that says that, but not in the other resolution. So I would just offer that as maybe need for clarification on my part.
Yeah, if it's, if it's, I'll double check. If it's not in there, we can add it before the second reading.
Yeah.
No, this isn't. That's valid.
Just to clarify, there, yeah, there's not a second reading.
Yeah.
So I, I thought it was in there, but if it's not, then it, we should, you, it'd be a second amendment that you would make to each of the resolutions.
Thank you.
So if we were prepared to move forward, Mr. Walsh, do you have the language that would need to be in the motions?
Yes, I think, I think the, what, what I'm hearing is that we would, we would move to approve in accordance to a stack recommendation with two amendments. One is to make. to make a confirm a finding that the project is consistent with not only the general plan, but also the Highway 29 specific plan. And secondly, to amend condition of approval, I believe Mr. Heacock said it was 21 to add a requirement that they provide reasonable notice to the city of any termination or other loss of their lease for the parking on Mills Lane.
Loss of the parking at Daldel and the Formic.
Excuse me?
Correct.
Right.
I've got it.
So with, with those changes, is there a motion? Is there a council member that would?
I will move that we make the recommended action with the two amendments our city attorney just mentioned.
Is there a question? Yep, we have a second and a roll call.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Koberstein?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. Well, I want to thank everybody for the focus and the work here. It's a long process and like seeing the collaborative efforts. So thank you very much. That is our final item tonight on the agenda. So just some closing words for our community as we work through these challenges. We just keep saying the same things, you know, we have gratitude for all the efforts that keep going. I think Mr. Doring's points tonight were very important. If somebody is in a position to help somebody or if somebody needs something, reach out. Let's all keep working together. We've got to practice the three Ws, the wearing a mask, washing our hands, watching our distance, and we will make it through this very long, strange experience of COVID and get out on the other side. And also, again, thanks to our staff for the incredible, incredible endurance through all these issues. I just want you to hopefully hear that from me tonight. Thank you for just continuing on. So we'll get there. Appreciate it. And if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Good luck.
Thank you all very, very much. We're very grateful for everybody's efforts. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.